We're trying to let her 90th birthday.
Oh.
Her 90th birthday is coming up, so all of us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. This time, we are going to begin the August 22nd, 2022 City Council and successor successor agency agenda and regularly scheduled council meeting. We do have a quorum. Margaret, could I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. Okay, we are honored tonight to have the scouts with us, and they are going to present the colors and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and I will turn it to the scouts at this time.
Call guard forward march. Call guard halt. Call guard, prepare to post the colors. Audience salute. Call guard, please post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call guard before. Call guard retreat. Call guard dismissed. Audience at ease.
Thank you, scouts, for leading us in the pledge and posting of the colors. At this time, we will open public comments. Now to you, Margaret.
We'll take public comments in the council chambers, followed by Zoom public comment. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand and speak to speak under public comments. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Items listed under presentations, informational reports are on the consent calendar, and requests for future agenda items, new requests. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up with them on up on them with you directly. A speaker may not allocate his or her time to another speaker, and I receive no written public comments for this section of the agenda prior to the meeting. I do have one speaker card in person for a general public comment. I'll call on Clay Hallie.
Good evening, esteemed members of the city council and fellow Brentwoodians. My name's Clay Hallie. I'm a big city transplant and a father of twins, both recent graduates of Liberty High School. I live local, work local, and shop local. In other words, I'm just a regular guy. I wanted to address something that comes up from time to time as community members talk about members of our city council. It's what I call the "you work for us" attitude. Sometimes, we as residents don't fully understand what you do for the city and the hours you spend for a meager stipend. Roughly speaking, if I take any given council member's pay and divide it by the number of taxpaying citizens you serve, it comes out to a little over two cents a month, or about 25 cents a year. For this, you put up with our criticisms while working towards balanced growth, promote local events and businesses, plan parks, art, work towards city safety with our police and fire departments, engage with our youth and seniors, partner with our school districts, and more, much more. I can't imagine that you do this for political power or influence. It's certainly not for the money. The only logical conclusion I can come to is that you truly care about your city. Whether I know you or not, whether I agree with you or not, I will always respect you and appreciate your hard work, effort, and heart that you bring to the council and the city. Indeed, you make things better in Brentwood, and that's my two cents worth.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danny Dorman.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost. Hello, Clay. We've been talking online forever in a day. And ironically, sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree. It is interesting, the topic he brought up tonight about you working for us. We can agree to disagree. But it does dovetail into an agenda item that's going to be discussed tonight, and I will talk about it then, but I want to give a broad picture. And that is, do you vote on something because it's the right thing to do? Or do you vote on something because you just don't like it? For example, I think of example because I like so many things. I'm not a vegetarian. And, Mr. Mayor, I saw you smile. I think you're not a vegetarian either. If somebody wanted to open up a vegetarian restaurant, as much as I don't like eating vegetarian or vegan, it's my choice whether or not to go or not. There are people who love vegan. Don't understand why. They do. They should have the opportunity to choose, just like all of us have the opportunity to choose. When, and this is a tough one because, one, this is going to be a predetermined outcome, one of the agenda items later. So I may be tilting at windmills with respect to this. But if a business wants to open up and the business provides a legal product or service, then we should embrace capitalism, which is what it is. There are things, again, there are things I can't stand. We could put a ban on Sino. I'd love that. Because I don't like the guy. Other people do. That's their choice. And so I respect the fact that that's their choice. I just don't respect the person. The products and services, there are some I like, there are some I don't like. There are some that are sold all over the place, even in the city, at gas stations, liquor stores, big chains, little chains. And me being an equal opportunity guy, if you can get rid of all those things you don't like in said establishments, great. But the problem is, if you can't get rid of those things in those establishments and an entity wants to sell the same service on their own, then they ought to at least have the opportunity to be judged on the merits, not on what you like or don't like. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person for public comment is Christina Johnson.
Hi. Oh, that's a little bit louder than I expected. Good evening. I'm Christina Johnson. I am the founder and CEO of Ruff Day Rescue. That's R U F F Day Rescue. We are a registered 501(c)(3) operating in the Contra Costa County Corridor, I guess if you will. Our mission is to save last-call dogs from our shelter system. So we save our dogs from Contra Costa County Animal Services, Antioch Animal Services. We go all the way up to San Joaquin. We go down through the Central Valley Corridor. We even save dogs in Southern California and Texas. So we do a lot of work around making sure that any dogs that are what we call last call, so there are lists that come out for euthanasia, that we we pull them, we tag them, we find them a foster system. We vet them, spay and neuter them, microchip them, and get them into loving homes. I bring this up tonight because, you know, we are really focused on making sure that we drive some value from doing that into the community. And with that, we are planning our first ever Potoberfest here in the Brentwood community. So we will be at Veterans Park from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. on October 28th. It is the first ever Potoberfest, so not just Oktoberfest. You'll still have beer at the Potoberfest. But our plan really is to kind of bring this awareness to what's going on with this this exponential crisis that we have in the shelter system today. Hundreds of thousands of dogs are being euthanized daily. More and more people are dumping dogs on the side of the road. People cannot afford veterinary care. People cannot afford spay and neuters. And our mission really is to not only try and help the shelter system clear out these dogs so they don't have to make those heartbreaking decisions to euthanize, but also to try and keep those dogs out of the shelter system. We believe that one of the ways to do that is to microchip your pets because if your pet gets out, right, a lot of times it'll end up in a shelter or in somebody's home, and you have no idea that it's there, or it'll end up in a vet ward, right? And microchips do move, but it is a way to help spay and neuter vaccination and helping the public with any things that they might need in order to be able to support their pets, right? Keeping them in their homes. At Potoberfest, we are super excited because we want to bring the the community to have a good time, right? So we'll have your typical Oktoberfest fair. We also will be having a costume contest for dogs. So you'll get to dress your your family friend in your favorite costume and parade them around. We'll have live music. We'll have food. We're going to have vendors. And additionally, we're going to do some fundraising for our local community here in Brentwood. So we'll be taking donations for food, for any type of needs that our community members have for their dogs. We plan on working to do some microchipping as well as providing certificates for spay, neuter, and vaccinations, and really doing our best to try and alleviate some of this burden on the Contra Costa and the Brentwood community. So we are looking forward to hoping to have the community there to support us in our first ever Potoberfest, help us to make it a success. Therefore, we can continue to drive more value back into our community. We've saved 261 dogs, just my husband and I, in one year alone through a foster-based and donation-based system, and we plan to double and triple that in the years to come. So I just wanted to take time to let everybody know what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker card I have in person is from Rohan Tioki.
Hello. Good evening, Commission. I'm here on behalf of the Youth Commission just to deliver a short and brief update on some of the things that we've been doing and also look forward to doing. Currently, since we delivered a year in review, I think back in June, if I stand correct, the Youth Commission has had to cancel its annual pool party in July due to bad weather. But we look forward to continue to plan events for our youth across the city. We held our first meeting with our new commissioners, I would say about two weeks ago, where they were situated, and we held a workshop. So for the meeting tomorrow, which is our first official Youth Commission meeting of the year, and we look forward to continuing to work with the council as well as plan events for youth in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards in person. I do have three hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Cinziana Todor. Cinziana, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. This is Cinziana Todor, and I have a couple items to speak on. First of all, I just want to bring up the fact that Brentwood PD is not in touch with the residents and not interested in addressing and solving community problems. I've noticed this more and more, you know, in the past months by observing things that are municipal code that is not enforced, that city parks and a lot of other incidents that I've noticed on the street. Also, the quality of services, again, for Brentwood PD, they're turning a blind eye to many violations around the city. But this is not a surprise, knowing that an incompetent city manager named the current police chief, whose main focus is social media presence and taking selfies at events downtown. I contacted a police chief via email on July 28th, and that's roughly about a month ago, in regards to the homeless encampment by Highway 4 behind streets of Brentwood. My main reasons were as follows. I'm concerned about the impact of this nuisance on the streets of Brentwood and the few merchants who are still doing business there. I am surprised Chamber of Commerce does not have anything to say about it, but maybe none of their street merchants are paying members, so yeah, there's no impact to the Chamber. I am concerned that reputable companies will be swayed away coming to the Future Innovation Center when they see this nuisance. Also, in the past, residents used to walk, including myself, on that trail all the way close to the freeway, exercising and walking, and get coffee or lunch at the streets of Brentwood, and not anymore. The people I talked to, they're citing safety concerns. My email to the chief was passed on to the, I'm quoting, Department Expert on Homeless and the current and the current on homelessness and the current laws, and I received a canned response, the same response that other concerned residents received on this topic. And the response contained something about the laws that I read five years ago out of curiosity and for my own information. However, as residents, we should not even care about what laws apply and whose property it is, or if it's a right-of-way situation, as mentioned in the email. We have the police department who are paid to know those laws and apply them. The laws-related paragraph was followed by the usual blurb, that implies there's nothing they can do about it, and then a contradictory phrase following saying not to be under the impression that Brentwood PD is doing nothing and anything about the situation. Well, so far, it looks like they are not doing anything about the homeless encampment at the streets, or what is being done is not effective. The reason I say this is because the encampment keeps growing. I just noticed today that there's wall art laying around over there, possibly from somebody's house. I mean, I don't know. Like, I'm not a police officer, and I have no jurisdiction to investigate that. But a lot of trash also is accumulating, and it's really becoming a nuisance for everyone driving on the freeway and living in the nearby communities. All I'm asking you tonight is to direct Brentwood PD to take care of this situation, help the residents in this encampment to find humanly accepted condition, acceptable conditions to live in, and get services, restore order in that area. If they don't know how to do this in a legal manner, maybe they can contact Santa Rosa Police, Menlo Park, or even Irvine Police, who were successful in solving this type of issues in their jurisdictions. Another topic I want to bring up is, let's prepare for Bright Dele Gate. Please revisit the previous meetings related to the previous application for this development, understand the issues around this application, residents concerned, and represent your community as a common front and not give in to any threats from the developer. He sued the city, and the city council members were named in that lawsuit before. But however, it was without success. The city won. The council members were in good state, and there was no impact on anyone. And you can look up the details on the case number on the county website. The number is MSN 21-0980. You can confirm this with the city attorney, but this is the number I found on the documents posted related to this case. So thank you very much, and have a good meeting.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. Three things. One, I know there is a proclamation on suicide prevention in our in the consent calendar, and I wanted to let everybody know that Oakley is having the Oakley Walk to Prevent Suicide on October 7th at Civic Center Park. It's a family-friendly walk. It's a one-mile walk. It's not a huge walks, so young children can participate, and you can register at AFSP.org/Oakley. Another organization that is doing something very wonderful next month is Stand Down the Delta 2023. It's from September 8th to September 11th, and they provide services for veterans who are in need of medical assistance, services, housing, et cetera. It's held at the Contra Costa Fairgrounds in Antioch. They do need volunteers, and you can find more information at deltaveterangroup.org. And finally, I'd like to thank Councilmember Mendoza for pulling the project for bringing, oh, God, I just forgot the name of the restaurant, the dog friendly restaurant that I went to so many times in Concord. I wanted to let people know that this is part of what city council members do when city residents ask them to please pull things from the agenda because they are responsive to city residents, and you end up with projects that residents want, like we wanted Costco. And we let city council know, hey, we really want this Costco in Brentwood. So many people sent emails, and it was amazing. And so now we want this other restaurant here. And so Councilmember Mendoza has pulled it for review to see if the the project can be accommodated and the applicant and city council can work on overcoming whatever objections there are there. This is very important. This is part of what city council does. And for someone to come and say, oh, just go ahead and govern, that's, this is part of governing. This is part of governing, pulling things from the agenda, taking a look at projects, helping out planning. Planning helps out city council. This is how it works. So thank you so much for that. And I look forward to having the name of the restaurant that escapes me in Brentwood because the food is really good. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Akshag. I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name. I apologize if I butcher it. Malukta? Go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you all this evening. And, oh, I saw my hand up. All right. My name is Akshaj Malukatla, and I'm a member of Courage in Contra Costa County. And this is my fourth year, I'm going into my fifth year of being a member of Courage in Contra Costa County. And here is why. My father immigrated to this country in 1996, and And, uh, he was around like twen- in his mid twenties when he immigrated here. Uh, before that, in his teenage years, due to a bunch of stress that he faced at home and school, uh, he took up the habit of smoking cigarettes and he turned to tobacco for his problems. This later affected him on in life, as when I was seven years old, he suffered his heart attack, his first heart attack. Uh, this really shook me. It was a catalyst event which I don't think I still have overcome. And, uh, it's mainly the reason what drives me to advocate against other youth using tobacco. Uh, so when I speak here tonight, I'm speaking for all of Contra Costa County that there are definitely gonna be more stories like this if Brentwood continues down this path. Here are some statistics that are relevant to this matter today. Since the pandemic, tobacco retailers have increased by thirty-three percent in Brentwood. And this is completely different than any other jurisdictions in this county. This statistic only tells me that Brentwood is an outlier, but that in a way Brentwood may be encouraging tobacco usage in the city. This is completely opposite to the goal that I've been placed for five years on. And my goal has been to prevent other stories that mirror my fathers, that mirror my fathers. It is my sincere hope that the city of Brentwood, that the city council in Brentwood votes to prohibit new smoke shops so that other young children and young adults, young adults in Brentwood can live a fulfilling life. To prevent more stories like my father. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sandy. Sandy, go ahead.
Yes, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I was wondering, uh, I just moved into Brentwood a few years ago. Uh, I'm near the Pepperoni Park, Wylos Madonna's College. Are you familiar with that park? Hello?
Sandy, during public comment, we are legally prohibited to have a dialogue, because it is not an agendized item. So please feel free to, uh, make your comments. Thank you.
Alright, understood. So, in speaking to Shea, the developers, after they were completing the project, I had asked where the shade was for the dogs in the dog park area. And Jeff with Shea, he's, I guess, the program manager for Shea, indicated that they were done with their piece of the project. It was up to the city of Brentwood and the Parks and Recs Department to give shade to the dogs, that he was done. And I said, well, okay, so then I called Parks and Recs. Parks and Recs said that the city council and city of Brentwood had already went through all the public comments on that park. Everything's been closed. And basically, I guess it is what it is, but the problem with that is, I don't know if anybody who put feedback into the, uh, architect of the park understood the heat Brentwood gets and that that park is centered around senior community. So you're gonna have pets and seniors in a park with no shade. So I'm looking for information on how citizens can either donate to get some type of umbrella structure put up, like the ones they'd have in the different parks, like Aspen Park has those brown overhang items over the play area. But shade will be needed. I don't, I just don't understand it can be completely shut down from that conversation. So, I guess I'll get an email or something after this question?
I don't have your email address on file. If you'd like to go ahead and email the city clerk's email address at cityclerk@brentwoodca.gov, I can share that with other staff.
Okay, and I actually submitted the same question to the city clerk, so it should be recorded. I don't know if you received it. I set up the, uh, proposed agenda item a few days ago. I thought it would be recorded, so you should have my email, but I can send it again.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
The next speaker...
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Sanvi Panda. Um, Sanvi, it looks like you're using an older version of Zoom and you may not be able to talk. Do you wanna try to upgrade and... Are you able to unmute? I'm unable to get Sanvi to unmute. With that, I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff. And, uh, tonight we'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you. Um, since the last time we met, I attended a forum with Somerset residents. I attended a town hall, um, with the, um, with our Housing and Contra Costa Department and Transportation. It's investing in the future Bay Area housing, a bond that will provide dollars for affordable housing. However, none of the dollars will come directly to the city. It goes to the county and then we have to ask for money, just like we are asking for money on Measure X. So, um, after listening to that call, I'm actually inclined to not vote for it unless we could get dollars allocated exactly for our cities. I attended a Negocio de Espinos meeting, which is, um, a small business club that's starting in Brentwood for Latino businesses. Uh, spoke to some residents, um, from Trilogy who are actually putting in place their own ADU guidelines into their bylaws. So I'll be, um, reading their bylaws and see how they match up with the city. Um, updated, update from Assemblywoman Lori Wilson, attended two Cali meetings with an informational update on, um, California population projections. Uh, attended Celebrate Friendship of Two Great Democracies, US, the United States and India, and watched the Planning Commission and then pulled the lazy dog for review.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson?
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. I went to a community meeting at the Brentwood PD to discuss the incident that occurred on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, that ended in a homicide. Um, got an opportunity to hear the residents all speak about the incident and hear the police give a brief about what occurred. Um, met with members of the community and represented from the county to discuss the effects of tobacco on, on our youth, specifically in the city of Brentwood. Uh, watched the recent, um, Planning Commission meeting and didn't have much time for much else, because I threw an amazing, in my individual capacity, an amazing women's empowerment conference in Brentwood.
Uh, Councilmember Orlemans?
Since the last meeting, um, I met with Bill Weber at the Veterans Hall about some issues they were, wanted to discuss. Um, I attended the PAL after-school bowling at the Bolero, uh, meeting with, uh, Maria Hurtado regarding, uh, the recruitment of the new city attorneys. Um, the, I attended a, the Community Kids Market in City Park, um, then Makers Boulevard and Farmer's Market both week, both weeks, as well as a plan, the Planning Commission meeting, uh, on the last meeting.
Thank you. Since we met last, I attended a forum with Somerset residents. Um, two California Alliance of Local Electives meetings, uh, one of them was a planning commissioner from another part of the country dealing with the elimination of single-family zoning in, it's not just happening in California. And the other, the California Department of Finance Population Projections. Uh, listened to a presentation on housing homelessness and the impacts of mental health issues and drug addiction by Assemblymember Lori Wilson. Um, attended the India Independence Day celebration put on by the Brentwood Indian Community Team. Um, spoke to several residents about an agenda item later on this evening concerning extreme heat and its impact on, uh, dogs in Brentwood, and also, uh, watched the Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Since the last time we met, uh, I had the privilege today, uh, to spend time with Mrs. Ethel Badham, uh, who turned one hundred and five years old today. Uh, and, uh, I found out that, uh, age is not a diminution of interest in all things that we nerds enjoy, like subatomic particles and dark matter and black holes and anti-gravity theories. And, and she is a fascinating lady. Uh, so it was a lot of fun, uh, spending time with she and her family and the residents, uh, at, at the apartment complexes that she lives in. Also, I attended the final, uh, concert in the park, uh, this Friday night. Uh, it was, uh, well-attended and, uh, it's, it's just a great event. Everyone that I have had an opportunity to speak with, uh, talks about how much they love the concerts in the park uh, and the diversity that it brings musically, artistically, and the bringing the community together. I also had the opportunity to, uh, present a certificate of appreciation to Chabad of the Delta Jewish Center uh, for their efforts to bring unity, uh, into the East Bay Area. I also attended the Remote Access Network, uh, the CALID, uh, network, which is called the RAN Committee, RAN Board, uh, that is responsible for making sure the funding and implementation of life scans and, uh, technologies, uh, that are, are coming online. Software and hardware are able to be in our police cruisers in the entire county so that they are more readily able to identify the individuals that they are in contact with. Uh, I met with a family, uh, potentially, uh, they had just moved from Brentwood. They're interested in potentially opening a Mediterranean restaurant. I gave them my full support. Uh, and, uh, met with a couple of our residents regarding concerns on, uh, the water situation and heat as well. Anything for, further to report at this time? Uh, do we have any reports from the city?
Thank you, Mayor. I would be remiss if I didn't introduce two of our new directors who started in the last week. And they're seated, one is seated up here, Casey Wicker, our new Director of Public Works. And totally fine to seat up here on the dais, Alan Bakular, our Director of Engineering. And they're both internal hires, have dedicated lots of years to the ci- city already and have already jumped in, uh, full force and running the new departments. So I wanna welcome them and introduce them to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome Casey and Alan for your new areas of responsibility. We appreciate you very much. Uh, and for the community, if you are not aware, um, Director Casey Weigert is the reason uh, that you are able to have water in your homes and, uh, your toilets flush regularly and they go where they're supposed to go. So thank you very much for that. If you have any issues, now you've got a face to put to the name. And, and Alan, right now I'm gonna let you slide, so. At this time, we will move into consent calendar. And do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I make a motion to adopt consent calendar. A second?
We have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Item moves. We will move into item, uh, F-one, Public Hearings. Uh, our next item involves the interim urgency ordinance for smoke shops, and Alexis Morris will present. Alexis?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. The item before you tonight extends the interim urgency ordinance that implemented a moratorium on new tobacco smoke shops. Uh, this moratorium was originally adopted by City Council on September twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two and then was extended for ten months on October twenty-fifth, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. The current interim ordinance is set to expire September eighth, unless it is extended this evening. Currently, there are approximately ten permitted tobacco smoke shops operating within the city limits. In order to study, analyze, and make recommendations concerning permanent regulations on tobacco retailers, the city council unanimously adopted this interim urgency ordinance uh, to place a moratorium on an issuance of any new permits, entitlements, or other approvals of new smoke shops within the city. No new permit, license, or entitlement for any smoke shop is allowed during this moratorium. Permanent regulations related to tobacco sales are included as part of the city's focused zoning ordinance update uh, with the council heard a presentation on and authorized the work plan in January of this year. There will be a city council workshop in November in order for the council to provide direction on the zoning ordinance update, including what types of permanent tobacco regulations the council would like to, staff to bring back in draft form. For example, these new regulations could include distance requirements, uh, from sensitive land uses, restrictions related to types of tobacco paraphernalia, or total bans on certain types of tobacco products. The council may also provide feedback on those future regulations tonight. With that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt this, uh, ordinance extending the interim urgency ordinance, um, for, including a moratorium on new tobacco smoke shops for an additional period of one year, which would be through September eighth of twenty twenty-four. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I, I do have, sorry.
Yes, that's okay.
I have a question. Um, I didn't see anyone else's mic on, I'm sorry. Um, so you're saying you're coming back in November, but later on today, we have an agenda item. So we can pull that forward. I don't have to wait until November to update that ordinance, correct?
The agenda item tonight would be for council to give staff direction on whether they wanted that to happen separately or at a different time than the overall zoning ordinance update.
So yes, we can bring it forward. We don't have to wait till November, I guess, is my question?
Yes, if, if the majority council agrees, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any further clarifying questions of staff at this time? Okay, seeing none then, at this time, I will now open the public hearing. Margaret?
I have nine speaker cards in person. And this is the time to comment on this item. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the, on the form provided at the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom and plan on speaking, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And we did receive one public comment, um, via email prior to the meeting, and that's been posted on the city's website. I'll call on Emily Chan. Followed by Clay Howley.
Hi. Hi, Council and Councilmembers. And hi, I'm Emily Chan. I am a Brent, uh, Brentwood resident, but also a senior health educator with the Contra Costa Health, um, Tobacco Prevention Program. But I am speaking here as a Brentwood resident with family relatives, young family relatives who attend Edna Hill Middle School just around the corner. And so I've been a resident here for a couple years now, and I've been able to enjoy, um, the city and really, um, and, and I've been able to witness the field experience, the charm of the city, and also witness the, the development within the last couple of years. And what I think is, um, without this moratorium, I think, uh, we, we could see an increase of smoke shops or smoke tobacco retailers and, um... And, and, and in places that where I frequent with my young cousins. And so what, what I think is, uh, sorry, let me get my... Okay, um, and what I think is, um, what I fear without this moratorium is an increase in, um, shops and, and their advertisements in their storefronts. And what I've seen is, and with tobacco advertising, it's very appealing to young people because of the colors and the characters that they use. And something that I've heard from my cousins is that they've shared that some of their schoolmates have had access and have had, have used tobacco products. And so with an increase of shops and possibly advertising in their paths, um, I can share, I can educate my cousins as much as I can so that they can make healthy decisions, but that doesn't, that doesn't reach out to all the youth of the city, of the community, and the people who I'm not able to spend time with. And so what I'm asking here is for you as, uh, as the council to consider how we can be supportive of our community's youth and really ha- support this environment where, where it's not, um, where it doesn't seem like it, it's making smoking as a tolerable, socially a tolerable, but really, um, it, it is a public health concern that we are all worried about and would want to keep our, our youth from even starting to, to use it and, um, just be able to, um... And just keep, keep them healthy and then be able to enter adulthood. and just keep, keep them healthy and then be able to enter adulthood thriving. And so what I'm asking is for you to consider making this moratorium permanent and setting limitations for tobacco retail licenses and managing the density of the tobacco and smoke shops around sensitive areas such as schools and parks. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Clay Halli, followed by Gabriela Del Rosario.
Hi, Council. It's me, Clay. Brentwood, 75 years old and still going strong. People who were born here, work here, start businesses here, want to raise their kids here. I mean, why not? We have 242 acres of parks, including skate and water parks, six sport fields, swim complex, and a universal abilities park. You know what we don't have? One single policy regarding tobacco sales. No flavor bans related to vaping, no proximity restrictions to other retailers or schools, no licensing, no enforcement. 20% of our population are the target age for marketing smoking and vape products to underage populations. That's 13,000 Brentwood youth. Let that sink in, 13,000. 25% of our 11th graders reported using vape products. 72% of them say it's easy to access. 54% of regular users purchase the products themselves or are given them. Half of them get them from tobacco and vape shops. Half. We have 44 tobacco retailers, 80% of which are within youth-sensitive areas. We've had a 30%, 33% increase in tobacco retailers since 2020 and a 50% increase in smoke shops at the same time period. How do we as a community feel about this? 65% of us feel the City Council should take action. 61% of us feel Brentwood has been negatively impacted. 63 want to limit the number of tobacco retailers. 70% are in favor of a tobacco license. So as a community, we're asking you to keep the moratorium for smoke shops until we adopt policies regarding tobacco. Adopt at least minimum policies regarding tobacco sales and enforcement to state and county levels. Institute a tobacco retail license. Protect Brentwood youth. Remember, the only way enforcement can have a negative impact on tobacco retailers is if they're selling to minors or breaking other laws. I want to be clear, I'm not anti-tobacco. I'm not anti-small business. I'm pro-responsibility. So let's keep things better in Brentwood for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gabriela Del Rosario, followed by Isabel Kursk.
Hi, my name is Gabby Del Rosario. I'm a senior at Heritage High School.
Yes, if you could lower that just a little bit.
Is it better?
Perfect, thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabby Del Rosario, and I'm a senior at Heritage High School. The persistent issue of teen tobacco use is unfortunately very prevalent in our community, which is why the continuation of the moratorium is key to protecting our youth. Vaping has become a casual and popular activity among students. Many are bringing their vapes and using them at school, in the bathroom, in the parking lot, behind the school. I think many younger students especially have become desensitized to the harms of tobacco use due to constantly seeing them, seeing their peers use them around them in school. This then leads younger students especially to begin using tobacco products. And electronic tobacco products are also directly marketed towards teens. So that's why it's very important for this moratorium to be continued in order to protect our youth. That's all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Isabel Kursk, followed by Michelle Gallardo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Bryant and City Council members. My name is Isabel Kursky. I'm a senior health educator with Contra Costa Health Tobacco Prevention Program. Unless tobacco use rates decline, an estimated 441,000 of all California youth who are alive today will die prematurely from smoking-related diseases. And our goal is really to change that. Thank you all for what you've done so far to protect the health of Brentwood residents, especially those who are most vulnerable, which are our young people. Last year, Brentwood City Council took an important step forward in protecting the city's youth by implementing the moratorium on new smoke shops. In Brentwood, there are currently 44 tobacco retailers, and 37 of them are located within, in about an average two-block radius or 1,000 feet of places where young people frequent, like schools, parks, playgrounds, anything like that. There are 12 significant tobacco retailers. And when I say significant tobacco retailers, I'm referring to retailers where their core business is selling tobacco products. So it includes those 10 smoke shops and two hookah lounges here in Brentwood, all 12 of which are located within 1,000 feet of those youth-sensitive areas. According to the 2021 to 2022 California Healthy Kids Survey per Liberty High School District, 25% of 11th graders report ever using a vape product, and 72% of 11th graders report that vapes are easy to access. At the state level, recent data from the 2022 California Youth Tobacco Survey shed light on just how young people who are vaping are accessing vapes. And the most common method of obtaining vapes was buying their own. And of those who buy vapes for themselves, about half of them report buying from a vape, tobacco, or smoke shop, and 11.1% report buying from gas stations or convenience stores. The California Department of Tax and Fee Administration provides state tobacco licenses to retailers in California. The data shows that since March of 2020, Brentwood has seen the greatest increase in the number of tobacco retailers in Contra Costa County with a 33% increase in retailers. The second-largest increase was in Oakley, which was only 13%. The city of Brentwood has one of the highest densities of tobacco retailers in the county and has among the fewest number of local policies to curb youth access. In fact, the American Lung Association recently released their 2023 Tobacco Policy Scorecards for California, and Brentwood scored an F. In partnership with the California Tobacco Prevention Program, the Public Health Law Center provides tobacco policy legal assistance and a model tobacco retailer license, or TRL, policy that is a useful tool to help cities like yourself when developing their own tobacco regulations. Between April and June of this year, Contra Costa Health conducted a survey of 220 Brentwood residents, and almost three-quarters of respondents supported a local law that would require store owners to have a local license to sell tobacco and use the annual license fees to cover the cost of basic enforcement. So checking to make sure that stores are following the laws and they're not selling to people under the age of 21. Other communities throughout the county, such as the neighboring community of Oakley, have a TRL and do charge those fees to support the enforcement. Many factors contribute to youth tobacco use, and a policy like a TRL can be effective to enforce retailer compliance, limit youth access to tobacco, and reduce the rate of tobacco use among youth. There are some additional considerations beyond just a moratorium on smoke shops that are based on best practices for addressing youth access to tobacco. A few examples are, communities can set a limit on the number of just all tobacco retailers, not just smoke shops, to the recommendation of one retailer to 2,500 residents, of which Brentwood has almost double the recommended number of retailers. Communities can also set a minimum price and pack size for tobacco products so products can't be sold cheaply in small packs, which we know are more appealing to price-sensitive individuals like our young people. They can also choose to eliminate the sale of vapes altogether since we know that vapes are the number-one used product by our young people. Surveys conducted of Brentwood residents show that 61% of respondents believe the community has been negatively impacted by tobacco use, and that 65% believe the City Council should take some form of action on tobacco. Contra Costa Health Tobacco Prevention Program is readily available to provide technical assistance to city staff, share our research and findings from local assessments, as well as provide customizable resources to educate retailers on tobacco laws and more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michelle Gallardo, followed by Zain Mamoah.
Good evening, Mayor Bryant, members of the council. My name is Michelle Gallardo. I'm a 20-year resident of Brentwood, and I have three children, 29, 20, and 13. Our family enjoys Brentwood. We take part in activities, sports, youth sports. We like the sense of community here. But I'm here tonight as a concerned resident. I recently completed the survey by the Contra Costa Health Department on tobacco use in Brentwood. And because of my interest in this issue, I asked for more information. I was shocked and sad to learn that Brentwood has no tobacco retail policies and one of the least restrictive in the county. And that also out of 44 stores that sell tobacco, 12 are within 1,000 feet of a school. Here's why this issue is important to me. My 20-year-old daughter was an active, healthy, charismatic high school graduate, played competitive soccer in the area for many years since she was eight. In her senior year, she was exposed to vaping. I learned months after she graduated that she'd been spending all her money that she had on vaping. I could see the receipts and I could see debits from her account. I noticed also that her voice became raspy, and she began to have breathing problems and would cough a lot. She visited the ER several times. She bought vapes from local smoke shops, used her friends. And I became concerned at how quickly her health was deteriorating in such a short amount of time. And I'm here tonight because I lost my daughter to a tragic car accident last year. And it's hard for me to think about the quality of life that she had that was diminished in her final months of her life because of vaping. My daughters, I'm here because in my daughter's memory, I want to share this story. And I want to be part of working with the community to address this public health issue. The city, the, sorry, the city's strategic plan that the council developed for the benefit of residents uses words like "safe," enriches lives, enhance the quality of life in Brentwood, provide high quality of life. And I just want to say thank you for making those statements in your strategic plan. I ask the council to please consider, at a minimum, adopting tobacco retailer policies to continue the moratorium to limit the number of smoke shops in Brentwood. And I ask for this in support of the shared vision that we have to provide safe, enriching, high-quality life for our children and our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Zain Mamoah, followed by Ruth Oniana.
Good evening. My name is Zain Memmon, and I'm a proud Brentwood resident and a senior at Heritage High School. I'm here to talk to you today about the tobacco and vaping issues I see in my school and community. Tobacco use currently plagues our youth populations, especially in Brentwood. Over 70% of 11th graders in Brentwood report that vapes are easy to access in our community, and 25% report having vaped before. In my own eyes, I have seen how tobacco and vape use have risen exponentially in my own school as our bathrooms are constantly filled with toxic clouds of smoke, and you can't go a day without seeing one of your peers succumb to the pressures of vaping. Even worse is that there are 37 retailers within 1,000 feet of a youth-sensitive area, leading to an increased youth tobacco access. Although it can be hard to confront, tobacco use is an issue amongst our youth, and it is our responsibility to take action to stop the spread of vape use amongst our youth. Think about your children, your nephews, your nieces, and all of Brentwood's future generations. It is not right to continue to allow tobacco retailers to continue to sell vaping devices and tobacco products that greatly harm our city's children. With the disastrous effects vape and tobacco use can have on young people, including increased risk for cancer and heart disease, it is up to our city government to take a stand and protect our youth. An extension of the moratorium will allow for our community to continue to work against the spread of tobacco and limit access to these dangerous substances in order to protect our city's youth and protect public health. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ruth Oni... Oni... Oniana? Sorry. Followed by Dani Dorman.
Hi. Hi, my name is Ruth Oniana, and I am a member of the Brentwood Youth Tobacco Prevention Coalition. I live in Brentwood, and I moved here like five years ago. And I, I have personally seen, I have personally seen my relatives and family friends suffer from tobacco addiction, witnessing how this addiction affects tobacco users and the people in their lives, has motivated me to be here today and to talk about how the new wave of e-cigarettes has affected our community, especially the children in our community. When I joined the group earlier this year, I was a senior attending Doja Libby Medical High School, and now I am a college student at Los Medados. But throughout my four years of high school, especially my junior and senior years, I saw a major uptick in e-cigarettes or vapes usage among my peers and especially underclassmen who are an average of 14 to 17 years old. This shocked me initially, but I naively assumed only rebellious kids actively sought out these substances until one day, in my junior year, I was approached by a sophomore who couldn't have been older than 14. And he asked me if I wanted a vape pen and that he always carried extras in his backpack. I declined. And to prove that he wasn't joking, not only did he have extras, he had dozens upon dozens of vapes in his backpack, all in different colors and flavors. He proudly told me that he sold them to other students, which had struck me. I declined him again, and I kept on with my life, but I never stopped wondering just how many kids had been approached like me and said yes. Vape usage doesn't stop at high schoolers. My younger sibling, my little sister, goes to Edna Hill Middle School. And she's currently a middle schooler there. And when she was in sixth grade, she would often tell me that she would hear her classmates discussing vape usage, this bragging about using vapes, discussing different flavors of vapes. And when people would talk about vaping and how it affects our youth, we usually think far away that that's not my kid, that's not my house, not in my neighborhood. But the reality is far harsher because it lives in our communities. It's in our schools, and it's affecting your children and oftentimes in your homes, usually without your knowledge. It made me wonder how many kids younger than that boy that had access to vape pens and e-cigarettes throughout my community? How many kids at that age of 14 are bragging about this without understanding that nicotine is a chemical that disrupts normal brain development? Nicotine can slow down your attention span, and tobacco is so widespread that, you know, we all know tobacco causes lung cancer, it causes heart disease, it causes so many things, but these little kids don't understand that. And the CDC states that 2.5 million middle schoolers and high schoolers in the United States are just reported to have used e-cigarettes in just 2022. And that means that's 14% of all high school students in this entire country, 3.3% of middle schoolers. And the fact that the middle schoolers are involved is just absolutely insane to me. And 85% of these children use flavored tobacco products because that's what is attractive to them. They like the sweet flavors, they like how it tastes, that's what they brag about. And in our community, like other people have said, 25% of high schoolers have reported using vapes, juniors in high school in our Brentwood area. And 61% of our community has been negatively impacted by tobacco usage, me included. And that's more than half of Brentwood's population. And this survey also portrays just how easy it is for minors to gain access to cigarettes. 72% of high school juniors also reported they could easily access vapes. Again, I've seen this. Regardless of how young people access e-cigs, it's our responsibility to limit and decrease the access points the youth have to these drugs. We have the power to remove tobacco from our streets, schools, and neighborhoods. If we make the right calls right now, we can create a barrier that slows this epidemic from growing and, you know, ruining the childhood of, of our children. And by continuing to extend the moratorium and creating new smoke shops and stopping the creation of new smoke shops, we will continue that path to a better and healthier future for our youth and our community. The next time the topic of e-cigs and tobacco prevention is discussed, I hope you all take a moment to consider what you would do to protect your child, your grandchildren, your niece, or your nephew from the dangers of tobacco. You would not let them smoke a cigarette, do not allow them to smoke a vape. It's the same thing. It's the same thing with like a different brand, please. Thank you for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dani Dorman, followed by Rohan.
Boy, oh, boy. I would be more supportive of this ordinance if it stopped sales in Chevron, Safeway, Winco. I'd love to have the council put up as a future agenda item to ban tobacco sales at every establishment in this city, not cherry pick. One of our kids mentioned stopping tobacco retailers. Well, Safeway is a tobacco retailer. Winco is a tobacco retailer. Chevron is a tobacco retailer. I would love, and again, my heart goes out to the John Moon who spoke earlier about his father. I've had family members and friends who have died. I don't smoke. No one smokes in my home. And as I was writing this, I really didn't think of anyone in my circle who does smoke. But that's not why I'm up here, okay? I'm up here because it has to do with choose. And I'm talking about those who choose to buy a product or a service. I'm advocate, I, I want to advocate the right to choose the same way that Carolina mentioned Lazy Dog. Spoiler alert, I'm for the restaurant. I will more than likely never eat there. I love dogs. I'm not a fan of eating while Fido fidgets. And my mother-in-law, forget about it, she'll never go there. But it's our choice not to go, just like it's Carolina's choice to go. If Lazy Dog wasn't built because the council or planning didn't like dogs, it would be wrong. Just like it would be wrong if the decision to not approve of a product or service was made because there are too many restaurants, the decor didn't meet city standards, or don't like the brand or branding. It's not about what one likes or dislikes. It should be if a business should be approved. The parameters need to be met regarding any product or service. Is it legal? And is it being sold already? Those should be the major questions. With respect to smoke shops, there are, may not be city, but there are state, county, national, rules and regulations. And another spoiler alert, I've seen kids buy cigarettes from AMPM. Smoke shops are, they have to be eyeballed. They're scrutinized, just like liquor stores, just like bars. Again, I'm not condoning smoking, kids, I'm really not. And to be honest, I'd love to see you guys boycott Safeway. I'd love it. You, your parents, I'd love to see you boycott Safeway and tell them, stop selling cigarettes for all the same reasons you said tonight, because I support that. But let's not be the morality police like in San Francisco, where you can't buy bottled water. I'm serious, kids, you can't buy bottled water in San Francisco. And lastly, there should be some shared responsibility. If kids are smoking at schools, as was discussed, shouldn't the school be held at least partially responsible? I can't imagine there isn't a teacher or an admin who doesn't know Johnny smokes or Suzie has vapes, but they're not held accountable. And parents, all you kids, you have great parents, it sounds like. And the friends who do smoke, shouldn't the parents have some responsibility, just like your parents take care of you? Again, I don't smoke, I'm not advocating smoking. This is simply advocating business. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rohan.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Rohan Tiagi. I'm a junior at Heritage, and I'm speaking to express my strong support for the proposed interim urgency ordinance that aims to extend the moratorium on new tobacco smoke shops within our city. As a young member of this community and the East County Youth Anti-Tobacco Coalition, I believe that our voices are crucial in shaping the policies that affect our present and future. The health and well-being of our generation should be a priority, and the extension of the moratorium on new tobacco smoke shops aligns perfectly with that principle. Tobacco products have long been recognized as a significant health hazard, especially for youth who are particularly vulnerable to the allure of such products. By extending the moratorium on new tobacco smoke shops, we can create an environment that fosters healthier choices and discourages the use of harmful substances. This in turn will contribute to the overall well-being of our community. I have seen the effects of the crippling nicotine epidemic on our city's youth, much like my fellow youth contributors here today. And the situation has yet to be resolved. Our schools are consistently crippled by the ease of access that many youth in our city obtain to e-cigarette products and their flashy advertising. It's harrowing to see the desensitized nature around tobacco products and how easily youth fall prey to these tactics. It seems distant now, but when I, it became much more clear to me when I saw one of my close friends become all but a shell of their former self after a history of nicotine addiction. Limiting the accessibility of tobacco products will safeguard young people from falling prey to the harmful effects of smoking and nicotine addiction. Fewer smoke shops means fewer opportunities for peer pressure and exposure to tobacco advertising, which can contribute to a smoke-free culture. This is not a matter of economics, nor pandering to large tobacco companies, which only seek to benefit from the continuation of these smoke shops. This, supporting the extension of this moratorium demonstrates Brentwood's commitment to building a healthier and brighter future for the youth of our city. I urge you all to consider the long-term benefits of extending the moratorium on new tobacco smoke shops. By doing so, we can prioritize the well-being of our youth and create safer and healthier neighborhoods, contributing to the overall betterment of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards in person for this item. I do have two hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Sanvi Panda. Sanvi, go ahead.
Hi, guys. My name is Sanvi Panda, and I am a member of the Courage Youth Health Coalition and a member of Tobacco Use Prevention Education at my school. There are so many amazing people who came in person to speak today, and I'm very sad I couldn't be one. I am only 14 years old. Many of the people in the room you guys are sitting in right now would consider me a child. So what do you guys think when you think of childhood? Not your childhood, but just childhood in general. I think the idea of childhood isn't so much about age as it is about experience. It's about being in a world where you're filled with a perspective that is full of wonder and light. Childhood is a time when your innocence isn't spoiled by the truths of the world. As a society, we spend so much time trying to protect children, physically, mentally, and emotionally. And now in this town, in this community, we have another chance to protect them from something dangerous beyond comparison: tobacco. Tobacco companies have targeted kids forever. They sell a product that essentially kills their customers, and they constantly need more people to keep up profits. And what better people to target than kids who are more susceptible to getting addicted than anyone else? As a high schooler, I cannot walk into any bathroom on my campus without smelling the sickening smell of smoke with the sugary aerosol from the vapes. And the worst part is, it's not just something that you see other kids doing. You know that anyone can get roped into it. It could be my friends, the people I care about. And for each person who vapes or smokes, it isn't one life being affected. It's more than you can count. It's friends, families, the teachers who know the student, the, everyone around them is affected by it. In Brentwood, 12 of the 44 shops that sell tobacco are 1,000 feet from schools. 34 of the 44 are near youth-sensitive areas, such as parks, playgrounds, and libraries. Passing ordinances to prevent tobacco from getting into the hands of kids is about more than me or you. It's about the future and our responsibility to give them the best world that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. First, I appreciate you, Dani Dorman, but here's where we disagree. First, my heart goes out to the mom who lost her daughter. I'm sincerely sorry for your loss, and thank you so much for coming tonight to share your story. So let's talk deceptive practices. Fruit flavors, bright colorful packaging that appeal to youth. By a show of hands, who here eats Fruit Loops for breakfast anymore? I bet nobody raised their hands. So why would vaping companies make so many flavors that taste like fruity breakfast cereals? Because vaping is for adults, or are they targeting children? Tobacco companies and vaping manufacturers are not concerned with the health of our children. That is not their responsibility, that is our responsibility. And they haven't cared for decades. They purposely target youth with deceptive banner ads on their computers that add toting a safer method that is not smoking. It's not the yucky stuff your parents used to do. This is much cooler, you can charge it on your computer, you've got all these delicious flavors, and it is so much cooler than what we used to do in our, in our day. It's also very difficult for people who get addicted, adults who get addicted, to quit. Because it's not the smoke, it's the nicotine. That's what you get addicted to. I know, because my father, it took him, he started smoking at 14 because back in the day was the Marlboro Man on the horse, the big sturdy man with the cigarette hanging from his lip. All the cool actors of the day that were male had cigarettes hanging from their lips. It took him 30 years to quit. And he tried, and it took on and off, on and off, on and off, until he finally was able to. And for the youth, it's even harder because the addiction hits them in the central cortex of their brain so much harder than for us adults. My kids are also in junior high, and they will not go and use the bathrooms because of the vaping. And to answer Dani's questions, the teachers can't be everywhere all the time. And vaping is so much different than cigarette smoking. Vaping, you take the little contraption out, you go puff puff, you put it away, you're done. You don't have to light a cigarette and try and smoke it all down. And it doesn't leave the stenchey smell that cigarettes used to, so it's not intrinsically obvious what child is smoking and what child is vaping. I agree with everyone else who said, let's make it more difficult to access these harmful and addictive products. I would agree with the speaker who said, make the moratorium permanent. We don't need more outlets to make it easier for kids to access this stuff. I absolutely agree that we need some guidelines for the sale of this stuff and make it a little more cost prohibitive for younger people to walk into a store and buy it. I also want to thank the youth who came here tonight to stand up for yourselves. You definitely deserve a better future. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised and no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, then, we will close public comments. And do I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Make motion to close public hearing.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. So at this time, we'll go into council discussion regarding item F1. Who would like to? Councilmember Mendoza.
So I brought this forward, the original time we brought the ordinance forward because I, for fun, I watch other city council meetings. And I was watching Antioch, and they banned a lot of the smoking, the smoke shops in their city. And my first thought is, that's a great idea. My second thought is, oh my God, we're going to be inundated with smoke shops because they're just going to move next door. So I'm glad we're doing this, I'm all on board with the extension. I have to say that I am a little bit disappointed. We don't know what we don't know up here. I am not, I love that it's your job, but I'm not an expert. So I might only ask in the future, and this would be Tim for you, that going forward, when we ask for things like this, you come with the whole kit and caboodle. What is everything that is possible? And then we taper back. I feel like in this case, we're stuck with, we have something that's very minimal that we put in place, and now we have to taper up. So that's my only thing is, I would hope that next time, come, when we ask for something, come with everything that we can do, like, you know, we have the sheet from the, from the county and what they're doing. It would have been great to have something like this. I'll talk about this at the next part of my, of my agenda request. The other thing is, I find it, the other reason I'm on board with extending the ordinance is, if you look at the map, it is basically in districts two and three on, on the east side of town, which is eerily familiar with where we have liquor licenses. And I am really concerned about saturating a specific area of town and even adding one more liquor license over there. So we'll talk about more about this later on, but supported it before and completely support it again.
Okay, councilmember, please.
Yes, I was wondering if we can move Councilmember Mendoza's agenda item up since we're talking about this. And I think from her prior comments, I would wholeheartedly think that tonight we need to be able to make some decisions about adding policies, tobacco policies, not just for smoke shops, but for all tobacco retailers. I also wanted to, as a council member, apologize to those youth who were spoke to by someone making public comment. Public comments are not to the audience, they should be directed towards our mayor and to us. So I'm very sorry, and I hope in the future you all are encouraged to come and speak on any topic you want to, at any time, on public comment or in any form here in the city. And I hope that the comments directed specifically to you did not discourage you from ever speaking. That being said, I think I want to thank specifically Isabella, I can never, I can't say your last name, I'm sorry, but from Contra Costa County Health for really sitting down with me as a council member and explaining what's going on in our city. I think that all the statistics that came forward that you showed, that Councilmember Mendoza will speak about later on, unless we can move it forward to meet with this agenda item, were so helpful in helping us see what's really going on in Brentwood. And I think it's something that our residents need to see, that, I mean, see the numbers, the, and the survey. And I want to thank Michelle Gallardo for speaking and having the courage to speak, and I'm so sorry for your loss. And I think that we definitely need certain things. One of the things I would actually ask tonight is that we put a tobacco retail license in place. The retail license is only $265 per year per location, which is really insignificant amount. But what it would do is ensure compliance with local laws and reduce youth access to tobacco. I also think that we need to work on updating our code enforcement in Brentwood. My meeting with the county representative and with Clay and Gabby Castro was so helpful. But before that, I had heard of, just from kids coming in my house, about how easy it is in Brentwood to buy vape pens and to buy flavored tobacco, even though we have regulation in place in the state of California that regulates and prohibits flavored tobacco products. I've seen youth, I've seen kids sent right outside of City Hall the other day, like literally sitting outside vaping with flavor, you can smell cherry flavor. with flavor. You can smell cherry flavor. Um, that being said, I think we absolutely, um, looking at the information provided by the county, zero policies, not acceptable. And I think tonight should be the night, not in November, that we make, um, a determination and make a change.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I was in supportive of this when it came through last year and I, and I very definitely am in supportive of it as well tonight. But I have to say, um, we learned a lot last year about this as we were researching and prepping for it, but I learned a lot more tonight. Um, and thank you, all of you for that. I, the stats that we're hearing tonight are appalling. Um, and frankly embarrassing. So you, you put it on us and we need to act on it. It is now this, this responsibility is on our shoulders to make things better. And I strongly believe we need to do that. But I mostly just wanted to say thank you for, for coming and speaking and, and sharing all of this with us and educating us this way. It helps.
Councilman Horlemans?
Again, and I know you've all heard this many times already, but thank you all for coming in. We truly appreciate the information. Uh, somebody had referenced how many emails we got about Costco, having you sitting here and talking to us and explaining the hardship you went through and sharing that with us gives us a lot more perspective as to what we should be looking at. There is no doubt, uh, where the majority of this council sits or where this council sits on the topic. And I completely agree, we should finalize it and start working on it tonight.
Before I ask for a motion, I do want to thank all of our speakers that were here as well. Uh, and I do want to speak to a couple of things that one of our speakers had said. Anyone that knows me knows that the very core of my identity rests in, in my absolute and total belief in an individual's personal rights. Having said that, uh, it is our absolute obligation to take a stand against something that is wrong and more than take a stand, uh, remediate what we can. I was, uh, raised in an area of the country, uh, that was targeted. And, uh, my family are a demographic that were targeted by the tobacco companies and the alcohol companies. And, uh, there, there is no doubt, this is not something new, like has been said earlier. Uh, when, when I was young, uh, tobacco use wasn't limited to cigarettes. It was, it was, uh, being, being on a, a high school rodeo team. Uh, there was a lot of tobacco use there, uh, being a baseball player, a lot of tobacco use there. Uh, and some of the information, uh, that is, is factual and disappointing, shocking is that a significant percentage of the adult users of tobacco products, uh, and by significant, I don't remember the exact number, it was in excess of 75% uh, began usage before the age of 18. And so if, if we are going to protect one of the most vulnerable demographics, uh, in, in our community, our children, then we've got to do something, uh, that not only protects them and makes it more difficult for the predators that are preying upon, uh, their futures and their health uh, to, to get access to them. Uh, but I would love to see as, as severe, uh, a, a stand as we can and measures we can to those who violate it at a state level. So, uh, I know we spent a lot of time in this. I do appreciate the time and the education that we got tonight. Do I have a motion regarding item F1?
As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt an ordinance extending the interim urgency ordinance that implemented a moratorium on new tobacco smoke shops.
I have a first.
A second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, before we call that, I need to call in the city clerk. Margaret?
An urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Brentwood extending the interim urgency ordinance implementing a moratorium on the issuance of any new permit, license, or entitlement for any new tobacco smoke shop in the city of Brentwood pending completion of a comprehensive review of the city zoning ordinance and finding the action exempt from CEQA.
Okay, at this time then, I'm going to call again for a motion. Do I have a motion on item F1?
Uh, hold on, I just lost it because I just moved over. Is it the one I just read?
The one you just read.
Okay. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt an ordinance extending the interim urgency ordinance that implemented a moratorium on new tobacco smoke shops.
A second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye.
It's the second one, right? No, it's not the same one. It's, um, sorry. I move to provide the following. No, there's, no, that is the right one.
It was the right one.
Yeah, that was.
There was no amendment to it.
There's no amendments. Do we have to make it say that there's no amendments?
No. So what we have recorded is the council's 5-0 vote to extend the urgency ordinance. Um, i-if there was additional feedback that the council wanted to provide to staff, there was space for that, for you, for you to consider that.
Can I ask a question? Um, when I asked if we could do anything, I was told no, but now it seems like we could have done other things with the extension of the ordinance?
Thank you for the question. Tonight's action was simply limited to extending the existing urgency ordinance. So no, you could not have changed that existing urgency ordinance. If you have additional feedback to provide to staff about smoke shops generally, you can provide that, but we couldn't have changed the ordinance.
Can we add to the, um, to the ordinance, well, not the ordinance, to staff direction? Because I think what happened also is there was some licenses that were given after the emergency and we didn't know about it. Can we ask that anytime anyone applies, we get a report out on that? Could that be part of the urgency ordinance so that we're aware of what's happening and that we don't find out when residents call us?
So much like the reading of a first and second reading of an ordinance, you're not at liberty to change the urgency ordinance at this time and you've already taken the vote tonight to extend it as written. Um, certainly operationally, you could talk to the city manager about what sort of notification could be provided to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, before that, I, I'd like to, before we move on, I think that the direction to staff, could we direct some creation or some policies in place for the enforcement of the California law specifically? Um, and this is not changing any urgency ordinance, but, um, enforcement through our code enforcement on SB 793, which is Health and Safety Code, Section 104, 559.5, subsection B, subsection 1, which is, uh, the violation for the sale of flavored tobacco. Um, I think that, um, we do need to beef up our, looking at some of the statistics that I've seen, our enforcement. And I think, I, again, I thank the county because they said one good model was to follow San Pablo. I've talked to city staff to look at the city of San, that they should look at the city of San Pablo. And so I would like to direct staff to increase enforcement. So if that being said, can we then move on to take a separate vote?
I don't want to get ahead of the city manager here, but the item was agendized to allow you to speak to other smoke shop issues. I don't know if it would be useful for you to, um, have further information from the staff prior to making that sort of direction, so you have some information about the enforcement efforts, costs, staffing, available resources, those types of things. Um, certainly, all of our directors are here for you this evening if you had questions on that score.
Counsel, um, since we've done this procedure before after a unanimous positive vote, affirmative vote, uh, the process that we have used in the past to negate that, that vote and reopen this opportunity, would, would that apply here?
So as I understand the questions coming from counsel, there is not an interest in setting aside your earlier vote. You do wish to continue the moratorium that's currently in place. What I'm hearing is some interest in providing further direction to staff as was contemplated in the agenda title. So I, I'm just trying to respond to questions about how you can provide that further direction tonight.
If I can, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, this seems like a law enforcement enforcement thing, right? Like, is it law enforcement that does this or who does, is this code enforcement or law enforcement?
Community enrichment.
Law enforcement.
Okay. So maybe.
Ma'am, if I can, if, over here. Sorry. I had to take off the other glasses so I could see further. If it's a criminal matter where they're selling tobacco to minors, that would be a law enforcement action. If it's violating the municipal code on the ban, that would be community enrichment, would take that.
Trying to think, or should we, can we add it to my, my item later on to add to that to be part of the?
Does it have for direction to staff?
We're, we're gonna do the whole kit and, the whole kit and caboodle. So yeah, so maybe we should just add it to the next item. Like, so there's clear direction, what we want done by staff. It's a future, it's this future agenda item.
So, agenda.
If I could jump in, so we don't want to be caught up too much in formality. The agenda was written to accommodate extending the urgency ordinance for another year. It was also written to allow any additional feedback as we continue to work in incorporating different concepts into the zoning code update. So even though you voted, I would say if you want to give some additional suggestions now, we will take that direction and then just make it by motion.
So I'd like to go back to what I stated about enforcement. Um, if staff can give us a, and, and I, I'd like to not wait till November, but I would like to get an update on, on a sooner agenda date, on the enforceability by code enforcement. Uh, like costs associated with it. I appreciate our, our city attorney, assistant city attorney bringing that up. Um, on the enforcement of ban, violations of, um, our state and local laws as they pertain to the sale of flavored tobacco products.
Can I ask you a question, Katie, about that? So the, my concern is code enforcement is reactive. Code enforcement doesn't do anything unless someone calls and tells them something's happening there. So I, I would like to find a way, and you know, one of the items on here is adequate enforcement, multi, um, sorry. It's, where people go in, uh, yeah, multiple inspections at at least one youth decoy annually. So I think that might be better because kids aren't going to call code enforcement on kids. So I think, I, I mean, I, we can do both.
I think my ask is to include both. So it's to get a full overall enforcement, not just code enforcement responding to code, but.
So that's, that would be part of the.
Yeah.
Ordin, uh, the overall, overall ordinance. So we, we can talk about it during the item then.
I just wanted to clarify that code enforcement isn't only proactive, it's mostly proactive, I mean, isn't only reactive. It does proactive enforcement for seasonal issues or if there's something that we become aware of that is an issue, we do do proactive enforcement. But because we only have four officers, we have to balance our resources. So it's not that we don't do proactive. It is just dependent on, uh, direction or situational. It's not the only thing that they do. Um, and I believe we have on this agenda the ability to receive that direction now. Or if you want to wait to the future agenda item request, we can do that. But I think they're the similar same topics.
One of the things that, uh, I've been made aware of, uh, in, from individuals in the community, in addition to, uh, the flavored, uh, vaping products and tobacco products, which I naively believed that because the state has, has forbidden that and, and made a law against it, that, um, the businesses were unable to have access to that. I have been educated that I was wrong. But in addition to that, they have also been selling single cigarettes, uh, other things that are specifically, uh, forbidden by law as well. And so I wouldn't want to limit, uh, our response as a city to simply the flavored vaping issue. There are a lot of other issues that are targeting, uh, our, our, our children as well. Our, our youths, our children, anyone under the age of consent. Uh, do I think that, uh, use of tobacco is, is dangerous to your health? I don't think it. Science proves it. And our surgeon general makes everyone have that little warning. But there's a lot of other things, uh, that, that we need to tighten up on as well. Uh, I, frankly, I just want it to be, um, nearly if not totally impossible to violate the law here and target our families with things that are, uh, federally and statewide against the law. And if, if an adult wants to use those products, they are an adult and they, they can make that decision. But we need to protect our children, our family from being targeted.
So I, I guess my question is, Mayor and staff, is it easier for us to put some in now? Or do you want them all on the agenda item, like all the stuff that we want put into the ordinance? What is easiest for you all to execute? Because I have a long list.
We would love the direction now. So just start listing off what items you would like us to incorporate and we will do the analysis and come back with some recommendations.
Okay.
And can I ask, I'm sorry, does that mean that the agenda item is, is, I mean, what is that going to be then if we're doing all of this for this now?
This agenda item was written to incorporate that direction now as well. So it's redundant, so go ahead and give the direction now and that'll suffice.
Got it. Thank you.
I was told that I, I couldn't, so now I'm, now we can't.
Who told you that?
Damian said that I could not talk about adding anything to the ordinance at this point. And anything I wanted to add, I had to do during my future.
Separate, separate things.
Yes. No, but I specifically said I have a list of things I want to add and I said, can I add it during the extension? And he said, no.
So you can't add it to the urgency ordinance? That is correct, right? That urgency ordinance is a full and complete ordinance unto itself. If you have a wish list of other items you wish staff to incorporate for a future ordinance, staff can take down that direction.
Okay, so, um, again, I'm, I am, like the vice mayor said, embarrassed. We did not include this in our first round and, um, going forward, we need to be clear about what our expectation is. And again, my expectation, Tim, is that we get the whole kit and caboodle and then we pare down as to what we don't want. Because I didn't know we could do all of this. I thought what we got from staff was like, that's the max we can do when it comes to smoke shops. So, um, and I, I'll email this sheet to you, but I do think we need a local tobacco retail license, um, for all of the tobacco shops, like, you know, um, Councilwoman Peterson mentioned. I think we should talk about what the maximum amount that we can charge for that. Um, I know you mentioned 260, but what is the legal maximum amount, um, that we can charge? Also, we should talk about where those dollars are going to go at it once we implement a license. I would prefer it to go to, um, middle school and high school education on smoking and partnering with the school district somehow. Um, a hundred percent flavored ban on tobacco, no exceptions. Um, kids are getting them, so I know that we want adults to get them, but adults are adults. They can drive to the next city where kids will just get it after school. And again, per the map, um, Liberty High School is inundated with liquor licenses. So even if it's just for adults, the kids are going to get them. I would like to see no vape product. Paraphernalia sold at all. They can, again, if it's an adult, they can go somewhere else. If a kid is desperate for it, they will find it somewhere else, but we shouldn't make it easy. We need to be very, very strict on our ordinances and regarding being close to schools. And we need to so-solidify that. How, how far can I be according to the state law? I want the strongest law when it comes to the distance on issuing licenses. Minimum pack size, you know, we were talking about the single, um, the single cigarette. And I know I've, you know, it shouldn't just be a pack of cigarettes. Let's make it something else. They have to buy a carton. If you're an adult, you can buy a carton. If you're a kid, it's going to be, you're going to be less apt to buy a carton. We, we're not going to allow vape, so I don't have to worry about vape, um, at this point. And we don't need one after another. If you have, uh, someone that sells tobacco at a gas station, you don't need one the next block over. So let's talk about what the, what the strictest law I can do when it goes, when it comes to proximity. I know a lot of the pharmacies are now, um, tobacco-free. I think CVS is, so let's just make sure they all are. If we're going to talk health and wellness, let's talk health and wellness. Let's not say like, oh, you can come get your, your medication to save your life, but then let's give you a cigarette which is going to shorten your life. That's hypocritical. I do want to work with our law enforcement on, um, I don't know how you do it, but you go in and you send someone that looks like a kid to buy tobacco products. I think we need to be testing all of them. I want to find if there's any way. I'm really concerned about the east side of town, like I am with liquor. I am really concerned about that. Is there any way to retroactively take away licenses? And I don't know if there is or not, but I would like the full extent of the law studied on that. If there's any way to, um, remove some of them, because it's just, it's disheartening to see this map. I think, and I think you mentioned some things as well.
Yeah, can I add one?
Yeah.
I think you had them all except I want to add the tobacco retailer license requirement in our city. And with the annual fee for that.
Well, that's like as much as we can charge, not just 260.
No, the two, the, uh, the, there's a retail license price. And I think the retail license price is on a fee calculator to enforce the policy. And then also, um, I think we need to look at a, a cap on not only, uh, smoke shops, but on tobacco retailers total. I think you said something like that, but, yeah.
And these all mirror Contra Costa County, so we're not doing anything that is above and beyond what Contra Costa is doing. There's a couple of other things that other cities do. So minimum prices on tobacco, um, no coupons, no discounts to be honored at any of your stores. stores. I mean, I don't know if kids are using coupons and discounts. I don't know how y'all feel about that one, but I didn't even know what a coupon was until I was older. So that's, those are the ones that I would like included.
And then beyond that, I think that some of the things that were mentioned were on for enforcement that I'd like staff to look into. I was informed that the Department of Justice has annual grants to support code enforcement. And I'd like us to figure out a way to look into those and give us a briefing on the annual grants for code enforcement through the Department of Justice.
And I have a question, Chief. My kids go to Heritage, they, I mean, what they say about the bathrooms is true, it is a hundred percent true. They are smoking in the bathrooms, it's disgusting, they don't want to go in, they've even started locking bathrooms in certain schools because it's so bad. What is the role of an SRO when it comes to this?
So I do know, I can speak to what Officer Rucker has done at Liberty, where he has confiscated and then issued citations for kids that possess tobacco products on campus, which then refers them into the diversion program. It gets, citations get referred to probation or diversion. A lot of times diversion is more impactful because something does happen, there's a consequence, because everything we refer to probation doesn't always get heard by probation. And I haven't spoke to SRO Sanchez to know what he's done up there proactively, but his role on campus is safety of the children and intervening when necessary to enforce the law, but to help mitigate and keep kids out of the criminal pipeline for conducting violations at school. So working with admin and using the school's ed code and their own policies as opposed to the criminal route for everything that happens on campus. But I can speak with him about what he is doing up there as far as proactive enforcement for the bathrooms and vaping.
That would be fantastic. If this just could be, like, I don't know, we call it in retail, we call them blitzes. If we could have a blitz, like it's ongoing for a while, so the kids know they're being watched, I think that might be helpful too. And I know, like, I don't know if they can go into the restrooms, I know he's male, he can't go into a female restroom, but it is a big, big problem. And hopefully our SROs can help out a little bit if they know it's top of mind.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item before we move forward to the next?
I think I have to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
We could just give opportunity for any staff to make any clarifications. Assistant city attorney has also tried to document this, and we want to show this on the screen to make sure we've captured everything accurately. And if there's anything else you want us to look at, now's the time to make that request. We don't read minds, so if you ask for tobacco shop ordinance prohibition, that's what we come back with. We don't know the full extent of all the laws and all the things that you'd like to cover, so this is the time to get that out so we can make sure we cover it.
I would also, I don't expect you to read my mind, but what I would like to do is if you know of any best practices in other cities, because you've worked in other cities, they've worked in other cities, please come with those, like, hey, you guys might want to consider XYZ as well that we think might help the situation. So it's not a matter of reading minds, it's about a matter of being city, staff, subject, matter experts when we're not. That's what I, that's all I'm asking for.
Can I ask a point of clarification on one of the items you mentioned, Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
So you mentioned retroactively taking away licenses and you're referring to tobacco sales?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't currently issue licenses for that, that's part of the direction tonight. So when you, when you say remove licenses, are you talking about business licenses or any?
So how, is it a CUP? When someone sells tobacco, they have to come to the city to get permission to sell tobacco?
Not necessarily. So the comments that have been made tonight about how little this is regulated in the city of Brentwood, so tobacco sales can fit into a number of categories, general retail, there's some PD's planned development zones that call out tobacco sales specifically and have a process for that. But not every tobacco seller in the city of Brentwood requires a CUP, okay? So it's situational. So it may be just permitted by right, a Safeway or a, what I want to pick on them, a grocery store, a convenience store could potentially sell tobacco without getting a separate CUP for that activity. Okay? So it varies throughout the city. So when you're talking about new regulations, those are easy to apply to new businesses in the city. It becomes a lot more complex when we're dealing with people who have existing vested rights or businesses in operation. So taking away something that was previously allowed is a little more complex, and there are ways to do it and other communities have done it, but there is no quote unquote license for us to revoke going forward. So it'll be a little more complex, particularly because Brentwood has so many planned development districts that have their own zoning essentially for each one of those districts.
Can we make it from now on, anyone who wants to sell tobacco has to get a CUP?
Yes, and that would be part, absolutely.
Can we add to the ordinance, so I'm selling liquor, there's retailers that break the law and their shelves have to be emptied of all their alcohol for a certain amount of time? Can we make it that if they break the law, like a first strike is you remove all of your tobacco items for 30 days, second strike, 60 days, third strike, no more ability to sell tobacco? Is that something that, since I can't take them away, how do I make it so scary that they don't even think about selling to a kid?
So there's a number of regulations that they, that could constitute breaking the law, right? So there's our municipal code, there's state law, there's criminal, there's administrative violations of the code. So I think we'd have to be very careful how we define what that would be. So if someone's violating their conditions of approval, for example, there is a process we can go through to put them on notice or go through a revocation process. It's complex, but it can be done. Criminal activities would have a different type of enforcement that aren't necessarily related to the CUP, but they could be, okay? So there are ways to address penal, you know, penalizing folks for violating conditions of approval, violating state laws handled by other agencies. But yeah, we can present what that might look like to the council and what the options are. And again, there's, going forward is much easier than dealing with the existing businesses in the city, it's just much more complex and what they have rights to because they've invested under certain understanding of what was permitted at the time and that sort of thing.
So then let's figure out what are the ramifications if they sell to minors or they do something that we, like, you know, they sell single cigarettes, like the mayor was mentioning, or they sell flavored vape. What are the consequence, what consequences can we give them for doing that?
Yeah, and I think what would be helpful for councils to have that information, what laws are already in place and what the penalties are violating, are for violating those existing laws, so council can carefully consider what needs to be added to that. Or like you talked about a blitz, what needs to just, what's already there but may need to be just more proactively enforced versus new regulations that can be added to that mix to regulate it more strictly in the city of Brentwood, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. Is that the only question, I'm sorry?
That was my only question for clarification. I think I'm clear unless someone else needs clarification on the rest of the items.
So I've been jotting down the notes that you all have given us, and I would just mention that the Public Health Law Center publishes a California Digest of tobacco-related laws every year. This year, that digest, so it's really just a list, is 163 pages. So there are a lot of laws that bear on this and this information can all be provided, the full universe of what's possible, what's out there. I don't know how feasible it is for staff to present that entire universe. Certainly, they can respond to all of these issues, but I just want to make that note that this is a very large universe.
I don't think 163 pages is that long considering the agendas we usually get. So I mean, I'll read the 163 pages if what you're saying is this is all that's possible, pick and choose what you want. I mean, I'm happy to do that too.
What I'm saying is the 163 pages is the list of laws and the short explanation of each. So it's just a large quantity of information out there. So I've jotted down what I think you want and I'm happy to have Margaret put it on the screen if you want to verify that's correct.
That would be great if we could see on screen, but could you also send the council the link to those 163 laws and see if like, hey, I didn't think about this, and the next time we get together, we can talk about adding any of those to our laws or getting more specific on it? I guess I'm not understanding if you're saying that there's more things I can do, but it's 163 pages, do I want to read them or not read them? I guess I'm not understanding.
So if I could clarify, so we have jurisdiction over certain aspects of this, so those 163 laws may be under, 95% of them may be under the jurisdiction of other state agencies. So we can certainly let you know what we can control from a land use perspective, which is what we're talking about right now, is an ordinance to deal with the land use regulations versus there's a whole universe of other regulations that people who do the, sell these products have to comply with, right? Similar to ABC or that sort of thing. So of that 163 laws, there's only a few of those that we have jurisdiction to enforce and the rest would be our local land use policies that you can add to that.
When they're breaking something that's not ours to enforce, do we partner with the enforcement agency that's responsible? Do we call them and go, hey, we're having these issues with, okay?
Regularly, both the police department and community enrichment, we have to because we become aware of things earlier than state agencies do, obviously, or county agencies.
Okay, thank you.
I think we also partner with like ABC and ATF, so alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, right?
Yes, and if I can add, as it relates similarly with the alcohol, there are nuances that they have in those regulations that those agencies can apply to the business that don't, we can't do from our perspective. So they can, as you said, as it relates to liquor, they can suspend their liquor license for 60, 90, 100 days, whatever. And they don't know specifically related to tobacco if they have that ability, but they do have nuances in their codes that we don't enforce, but they do, so we'll partner with them to enforce, do the sting operations with youth outside the businesses and those types of events, so.
When I'm looking at the list, I don't think I see vape paraphernalia restrictions, do I? Oh, vaping product sales, okay.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, do I have a motion regarding the information just given or do I need a motion?
You do.
I do need a motion. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to provide the following direction to staff regarding smoke shop rules and enforcement as produced on our screen, items number one through 16.
Have a first.
And I'll second that.
And a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving into item G1, our next item is a water conservation rebate program, and Mr. James Wolf, Water Operations Manager, will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Water Conservation Rebate Program offers financial incentives to encourage city utility customers to adopt water-efficient technologies and practices. The Convert for Cash Rebate Program offers incentives to residents and businesses to convert high-water use landscapes to approved low-water use landscapes and to replace existing equipment with approved high-efficiency models. This program was active during the 2015-2016 drought. The city was mandated to implement stage three of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan and reduce water production by 32%. Since the city has permanently adopted several water efficiency best practices that support water conservation, since that time, millions of gallons have conserved through the replacement of household appliances, more water-efficient devices, landscape conversions. We want to thank our customers who, on average, have helped reduce overall water production by 20% over the last decade by doing their part to respond to continued calls for conservation under statewide emergencies. The Convert for Cash Water Conservation Rebate Program provides water utility customers an incentive to convert water-thirsty lawns to water-efficient landscapes. Funding is limited, applications will be accepted on a first-come, first-served basis. The program will be available for residential, commercial, and multifamily properties, all who have an active potable City of Brentwood service connection. Maximum rebates are $1,000 for single-family residential sites, $5,000 for commercial family sites. Rebates greater than $25 will be issued by check pending available funding, once project inspection is complete and confirmation that the city utility count is current. Available rebates include landscape conversions, irrigation conversions, water-efficient appliance replacements, toilets, washing machines, dishwashers, smart irrigation controllers, and pool covers. Customers can complete an application after confirming their site is eligible and that they understand the requirements of the program by reading the guidelines available on the website. For landscape and irrigation conversions, we ask applicants to please wait to receive a notice to proceed from the city prior to starting their project or any project. We may reach out to conduct an onsite pre-project inspection before approving each project. Upon completion, applicants are to submit their completed projects for review. Once the approval process takes place, the city will issue a rebate by check for utility counts with current charges only due. In conclusion, the Water Conservation Rebate Program has proven to be an effective way to encourage the conversion to water-efficient technologies and practices. We believe the reimplementation of the program, along with the city's continued outreach and educational programs, will encourage customers to continue to use water efficiently as we all adapt to the ever-evolving water supply conditions. That concludes the presentation. I'm available for questions.
Any questions, clarifying questions of staff right now? We have done at this point. Thank you very much. At this time, we will move open public comments. Margaret?
This is the time to comment on this agenda item. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the form provided on the counter at the back of the room. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. No comments were received on this via email prior to the meeting, and I have no speaker cards for this item and there are no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, at this time, we'll close public comments, move into council discussion. Councilmember Pearson.
I wanted to thank Public Works tonight. We came to you before talking about some water conservation rebate guidelines, and I want to just thank you all for answering the call, so thank you.
I also want to thank all of our Public Works team that keep their eye on the burgeoning technologies and keeping us aware of those things as well. The water conservation situation is really not a simple thing to understand. I know a few years ago during the drought, we had everyone conserve, reduce, and then because it is just as expensive to run the system without people using it as it is with them using it because of different things in the state, it was a challenging situation. I'm glad that our residents have always exceeded the mandates because we have great residents. And so I really do want to urge our community to look at this program. Some of you may have been interested or concerned about being able to adjust some of the technologies that are available, and this is an opportunity that might just help you move forward with something like that.
Oh, yes, please, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just wanted to encourage staff to go big on the outreach for this, but be very clear in letting people know that it's a first-come, first-served, that the funds are limited, whether it's annual or one-time, translation into other languages, maybe information sent with water bills, whatever we can do to spread the word about this, I think we'll get a lot of attention and response to it, and I would love to see it, people really, really taking advantage of it. Thanks.
There's no further conversation. Do I have a motion for this item?
Yes, as detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving the water rebate program guidelines.
I'll second.
You have a first and a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. At this time, we'll move into item H1, request for new agenda items. Are there any new agenda item requests at this time? Seeing none, we will move into item H.2.1.
Mayor, can I ask that we move H.2.3? Mayor, can I ask that we move H23, the shopping cart up? Do we have someone here for that?
Of course.
Oh, the dog one, I'm sorry.
Okay. And we will continue with H.2.1. This is my request for a draft ordinance related to enclosures for grazing animals used for weed control. This came about specifically because of an incident that one of our residents had experienced with the, the goats that are weed abatement animals. I know our community loves them. I love them, they're great. But at the same time, she had some of the goats destroy a lot of her plants in her home and that had taken her, according to her, some of them eight years to, to grow. And, and, and so that, that's something that I wouldn't want to happen to anyone. And ha- having been raised in, in a ranching community and around working ranches, I know personally that there are processes for grazing that can be implemented to, to specifically keep the animals from being able to go into areas that they're not supposed to be. And I just would like council to consider that. At this time, I will open public comments. Margaret.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom and plan on speaking, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. One public comment was received on this item prior to the meeting, and it has been posted on the city's agendas page. And I have no speakers cards for this item. And, hold on. I lost my screen there. Okay, I have two hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Rod.
Yes, thank you, Margaret. I, I just happened to have seen the public notice last week about the right to farm, which is chapter 801, 8.01 of the Brentwood Municipal Code. In the right to farm, they mentioned thing. If your property is located in the city near an agricultural operation, may at times be subject to inconvenience or discomfort arising from these operations, including noise, odors, fumes, dust, smoke, insects, the operation of machinery, including aircraft. During any time of day or night, the storage and disposal of manure in the ground or aerial application of fertilizers, soil amendments, seed, herbicides, and pesticides, these and other similar inconveniences will not be considered a public nuisance if they are conducted according to proper and excess and excessive, accepted customs and standards. Margaret, I can't see my clock. So I just want to, as we talk about the sheep, because the sheep, they did actually come by and graze behind my house as well, and they did chew on a couple of, of plants that were sticking through the fence. And those are my plants and the fence. When you go through the fence, it's still my property, a couple of feet out beyond the fence, I believe. So the, the sheep did actually come and graze a couple of my plants. And, and for my wife and I, we, we were mostly amused by it. But it was, I understand the point of the other person who was a little bit distressed by it, and it is certainly something that we would want to, you know, for next year, be able to understand how we can protect our plants that may, may stick through our, our fence while still, while still having the benefit of the sheep do the grazing. But I was struck by that this might be a hazard that was envisioned in the right to farm. And so what I, what I would like to hear some discussion about on the right to farm and whether it affects the issue of whether these sheep can graze through, through the fence and maybe eat some plants. And also, just in general, and looking at 801, section 010, purpose and intent, it seems like the intent was for farms that are existing, and then development gets built up around them. And then, like, you build a house next to somebody's farm. Well, that farm was there, and they should have the right, and I, I agree with that. But we do have three golf courses that are now covered by measure Q, where agriculture is kind of seen as, as a, as a potential open space usage. And these golf courses all go through neighborhoods. And I think that, I think it just needs to be clear that, that farming done, that is implanted into a neighborhood after the neighborhood already exists, is different and does not fall under the purpose and intent of right to farm. Because I don't want to get into a situation where, you know, some, a fairway has been converted to a crop, and then there's a crop duster, you know, coming right down the fairway between two rows of houses, or any, any kind of hazard like that. So I, I just think it's very, it's important that that distinction is clear and understandable that, that the right to farm applies to farms, pre-existing farms that are then built around, and not necessarily new farms that are inserted into neighborhoods where we might have these, you know, little, little issues come up with the farming, where the sheep issue, maybe chewing on somebody's plants is, is one of the issues. And the other thing I'd like to, to hear about, if possible, is, you know, I don't think that having, necessarily having the, the people, the sheep unfurl fences that go all the way around the golf course, along the fence lines of every, every, every neighbor. But there ought to be some tips they can give us as non-farmers on how we can protect our plants that might be sticking through the fence so the sheep don't go after them while we still enjoy the benefit of having the sheep, you know, grazing down the, 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 the dry grass for fire purposes, which is, is great, actually. So we're happy about that. That, that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi. I drive around Brentwood, and I took a picture of the sheep eating the dry dead grass on a property, and I sent it to my parents. And they're like, oh, my God, Mejita, you do live in a farm. And I was like, no, Mom, this is what we do now to make sure that things don't catch on fire. We have these sheep that come out, and they eat all this dead grass and all this dead vegetation. They're really good at it. And the kids walking to a field trip happened to see them. They were going along the canal between Bristow and the theater, and they were fascinated by these sheep. What I observed is something that, of course, is common sense, is that when you put, when you put sheep in an area, you cannot tell them, please don't go any further than here and only to there, only eat these type of vegetation. If you put them in an area, they're going to clear it. They're going to eat everything within their reach. And if you make delicious plants that have been well taken care of, available to them, believe me, they will eat them. So I think whatever we can do to be good neighbors and educate people on how to prevent their plants from getting eaten, if their sheep are coming to that area, let people know, hey, by the way, be careful of your plants. And also, working with the farmers is a great idea because it goes both ways. The sheep cannot be held responsible for what they eat. The people who put them there can also, cannot be held responsible because it's hundreds of sheep. And the homeowners cannot expect the sheep not to eat their plants. So I think some cooperation all the way around would be really wonderful to keep this going. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments. I, let, let me be really clear. I, I am absolutely in 100% support of the goats and the sheep. I would love to, to have a, a local sheep shepherd or, or goat herd preference points from the city. But, but what the public comments did say really cut, cut to the heart of, of my request. And that is, I, I think we need to figure out a way that we can continue to take advantage of the, the grazing and, and the great work that the, the goats and the sheep do, but also help, help our community not, not have unintended consequences with that. And I have confidence that our staff has the ability to come up with a solution with, with the, the individuals that have the businesses that do that. So that, that was the reason for the request.
I appreciate the request, and, and I appreciate the comment of let's be good neighbors. One of my concerns, though, is a lot of times on the dais, we end up trying to create policies and procedures in place when we have enforcement of it. So we have law enforcement to enforce those, and we have civil laws. When you have dispute between two people, this was not a city issue. This was a, two private citizens, one being Mr. McCully and a resident, and a, a sheep incident and some plants that is, is resolved civilly. However, I think if we're going to be good neighbors and good citizens, I'm happy to hear what staff recommends, but I'm, you know, making an exhaustive thing, like, you have to have this amount of fencing, and it has to have this electrical shock seems to be so far, then let's just make sure we give notice to residents before we have sheep coming in the neighborhood so that they can take the preventative measures, preventative measures that they need to, to protect plants, and they know that they're coming so they can make sure that, hey, that the fencing is correct. I think that's maybe something we could do. I don't know if it needs to be a full-out ordinance, or a recommendation, or, or something like that. But I think sometimes we go a little far in policing everything and trying to enforce everything, and it, it makes us, makes it a little, seems like a little bit much.
I don't, I mean, they, they carry fencing with them. That's part of the, the company that they do that. So I don't think, I think what they, they think they were okay just stopping the fence where the wrought iron fence started, and that's the problem. I think they should just continue the fencing. If you bring your goats, your sheep, just, they do it everywhere else. You see them on Highway 6, 680. You see them by my house. They have to fence that whole area over by that dry creek. So I, I don't think it's a lot to ask for fencing because it's part of what they do business. They're saving a little bit by not having to, to do it. They save a little bit of time, but it's not just one resident. It was like various residents all the way down that they impacted, not just one. So just continue the fencing. I don't think it's that big of a deal to ask for. I'm, I don't know.
Do we have any city land where the goats are doing this, or is it just private?
Both.
So is there a different practice in trying to mitigate any problems like this, city versus private?
I'm going to invite Casey to respond. He, his department actually contracts with the goats' herders, and he has more details on that.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we, we do have city-owned property that we use the goats on, and we use the same fencing that the county uses the goat herders and the same that any private entity would use. It's mainly electrical hot wire fencing, and they just set a perimeter, and then they move it periodically as they, as the herd grazes down. I don't know that we've had any issues. I haven't had any complaints from residents of, of this occurring. We do have areas that primarily are around the creeks and detention basins, so we're not necessarily up into the backyards of homes like you have the situation in Deer Ridge. So I don't believe we've had any issues like this crop up on our side, but I also don't think it's too much of an issue to set those fences just a few feet away from property lines where that might be an issue. I think that's something that could be corrected easily enough now that we know what's happened.
Thank you. And can we then, I, I'm, I'm kind of with Councilmember Pearson on, we can, we can sometimes carry things a little bit far, but the issue would be residents, right? So can we specifically say that when goats are going to be mitigating weed problems and fire risk, by residences, we make sure that there's that movable fence that goes around? And if it's privately owned land, do they have to come to us first before they bring the goats in, or is it just, they just haul them in on a truck, or what happens?
We don't require that they come to us for private lands. This is, you know, a new issue. They haven't done this in the past at, at Deer Ridge. This was the first time they've done that. So no, they don't come and ask us first.
Is there anything we can put into place to say, as a private land owner bringing goats in near homes, you are required to have that fencing?
Certainly, I'm sure we could. I, I would tell you, if you give us a chance next year, we have a good enough relationship with Mr. McCully that I think we can take care of this without bringing an additional ordinance to you, but we can certainly put something in place if that's the direction.
Have we ever had a private land owner that isn't Mr. McCully with a concern like this?
We have not.
Well, Mayor?
Well, before we go further, just so everyone will, I know council knows, the community will know, we are very, very limited in the ways that we are able to bring our concerns to the council and to the public and to our staff. This is one of the ways we can do it. Seeing that this information has been addressed, I no longer feel the need to, to request a future agenda item. I believe that this situation can be handled with this information now out. So I respectfully withdraw my request for this future agenda item, and we can move on unless council would like to move forward with it.
So you're saying you're going to talk to him, and he can put the fence, instead of stopping, he'll just continue, is what you're going to ask him?
I think we'll talk to him and see. I don't think he'll be opposed to that. And I also don't know how much conversation he's had with the existing residents, but I'm, I'm sure there's probably been some word got back to him. So I think he'll be proactive enough by himself.
Thank you.
And I would assume if we do, oh, sorry, if we do hear about a private land owner bringing in goats, that we can gently suggest that if you're doing this, you need to make sure that you're protecting the lawns around, or the.
Certainly.
Landscaping, okay.
I had a question. I just, I know we're moving on, but it's a burden not weighing the benefit. This is electrical fence, and we're talking about like a few inches away from a fence with an opening. Can a child electrocute themselves if they stick their hand through?
They certainly could, and it's no different than any of the fence that we use accessible to the public parks and areas.
Okay, all right.
Okay. We will move into item H.2.2, a request from Vice Mayor Meyer to provide suggestions to the county for amendment codes related to animals being kept outdoors during extreme heat. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. So this was resident-driven, kind of as, as the mayor was just mentioning, some of these things come to us in different ways. We're able to speak with, about them in different ways. The Brown Act means that we can't get together offsite, outside of a council chamber, and discuss some of these issues that come to us. So several residents reached out to me, actually with concerns about one particular dog who had been left out for hours on end, tethered with no access to shade or water, no safe place to rest that wasn't touching cement or asphalt. Knowing that the county animal services had gone out to this particular site multiple times and not taken action, my thought was, what can we do as a city to encourage the county to recognize that Brentwood is unique in its heat, its extreme heat? And so that maybe we can contribute something to what the county ordinances already are to make sure that the animals, the domesticated animals in Brentwood are safe. And I did particularly mean domestic. I was not looking at trying to make sure that barns have air conditioning, for example. This is really specifically for domesticated animals who have been created by humans to serve humans and to be companions to humans and are vulnerable to heat when they are not exposed to it from birth on. We know that heat is getting more extreme, weather is getting more extreme. And Brentwood has the highest temperatures that I've seen in Contra Costa County. So in speaking with our city manager, communicating with Contra Costa Animal Services, my understanding is that if we can move forward with a discussion about what we would recommend in this area, what we consider to be safe for animals, and I've got some research offsite in just a moment, that we could in turn recommend to the county that, as a county, they adopt this ordinance, which would be, it would apply to cities all around the county. In fact, I have an email from Beth Ward that basically says that if we had this, the recommendations back to her within 60 days, that this could be presented to the Board of Supervisors if it gets to that point for potential implementation across the county. I know we're not the only city in Contra Costa that has heat this extreme, but we are the most consistently, the city in, in Contra Costa with heat this extreme. When I started doing some research, I was looking at the Animal Humane Society about National Geographic American Kennel Club. My understanding of heat was actually a little bit different. I, I was looking at higher heats being safe, where they're all, they pretty much all cut it off at 90 degrees, if not lower, depending on the breed and the age and the overall health conditions of the dog. But it is critically important that they do have access to shade, that they are not tethered in a spot, which means that they can't move around in the heat, that if there is water available to them, that it's checked to make sure that it's not in a metal bowl, and it doesn't heat up and then heat the dog from the inside out. I, I think it's, it's kind of, it's another one of our responsibilities to just take a look at this. Now, I know. Now, I know that we're not going to have the county coming out to every single call that we get. Enforcement is is an issue here as well, but I do have a sense that when there's an ordinance in place and people are aware that they could be fined for a behavior, they're less likely to have that behavior. And this is, you know, things like littering and dogs on leashes, leaving dogs in cars, that kind of thing. So I understand it's now it's pretty well understood that you can't walk your dog outside in heat where you can't put your hand on the cement or the sidewalk for even a few seconds. It's not safe and we understand that. And we don't keep our dogs in hot cars, for the most part, closed in because we know that can lead to death pretty pretty quickly. But what we're not doing at this point is making sure that people are keeping their dogs safe in the backyard. And and the extended period of time that we're looking at here, a lot of these sites we're talking about, check on them, you know, every half hour, bring them in after an hour if if that, I mean, we've we've gotten to what, 110 this summer? We've had days that are hotter than that. So really, what I would like to do is for us to think about what this would look like, come up with staff, come up with some recommendations that would be feasible to present to the county for potential implementation and review by the Board of Supes. But again, I'm I'm bringing it forward because I feel like Brentwood as a city could be the poster child for what to do for your domesticated pets when it's that hot out. It doesn't get as hot everywhere. I don't believe I had anything else. I'm trying to keep it somewhat brief, but I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public comments. Margaret?
If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom and plan on speaking, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I did receive five public comments on this via email prior to the meeting and they've been posted on the City Council Agenda page. And I have two speaker cards in person and I have two hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Christina Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Christina Johnson and I am the founder of Rough Day Rescue. We work very tirelessly to save and advocate for dogs and as well as lessen the impact on dogs being in the shelter system within our counties and our communities. According to PETA, this year, we have seen, we have already seen double the heat related dog, the dog, the heat related illnesses than we ever saw before, 2022. So this year alone, we've already seen double than what we saw in 2022. When a dog is exposed to heat stroke or heat related illnesses, one in seven of those dogs will die. Heat stroke and related illnesses happen when a dog's internal temperature reaches 104 degrees. This can happen when temps start crawling in the high 80s, low 90 degree temperature range, with exposure happening within just 10 minutes. That means a dog can experience extreme heat related illnesses in less than 10 minutes with temperatures that feel somewhat OK to us as humans. The impact is instant with a dog's organs shutting down, beginning to shut down almost instantaneously. Most dogs will die within five minutes. So taking that into consideration, having an ordinance that says you have to go check on them regularly, right, or check on them within every 30 minutes, is not going to prevent a dog from dying from a heat related illness. In the weather, in weather temperatures that are of only 80 degrees Fahrenheit, asphalt and concrete temperatures can be 30 to 40 degrees higher than what the outside temperature is. And they can even reach anywhere between 125 and 140 degrees. Dog's paws will burn within 10 seconds and some of these burns are irreversible. Brentwood frequently sees temperatures above 90 degrees with over 56 days annually being in that range, and we frequently see temperatures over 100 degrees. As we know, this has been the hottest year on record on the entire earth, not just here in in Brentwood and Contra Costa County. And the expectation is that 2024 will be even hotter and the next five years will trend to see even hotter temps. Dogs that do survive heat stroke and heat related illnesses can have long term issues, including muscle damage, long term muscle damage, neurological issues and dysfunction, kidney and other organ issues, respiratory issues and more. Now, take a moment to think about that because if we're in a community where people are already struggling to pay vet bills and you now have a dog that has a heat related illness and it survives, and you now have to figure out a way to pay for this dog's long term care, where do you think that dog's going to end up? That dog's either going to get dumped and it's going to be an impact into our on our animal services department, or it's going to end up in the shelter, where once again the community, that's myself, that's you, that's taxpayers, right, is going to have to take care of that animal and or make a difficult decision to end its life, right? In the meantime, we as a community are paying for those vet services and we're creating an impact on an already horribly impacted shelter system that is euthanizing hundreds and hundreds of dogs a month. Water alone cannot help heat stroke. And if water is left outside and and it heats up itself, right, because if it's hot and it's an aluminum bowl, it's going to get hotter, it does next to nothing for the animal. The way only way to help heat stroke is to ice baths water on body and trying to reduce its internal temperature. Shade only reduces temperatures from 10 to 15 degrees. If we have 115 degree weather, that means the outside temperature for that dog is still going to be 100 degrees. Taking into consideration my previous statistics, not even access to shade is enough to stop this heat stroke. Considering dogs' paws can burn with, you know, in as little as 80 degrees, access to shade does little to stop that burning and dogs need a place, not on concrete, but off of concrete in order to be able to rest. Dogs also release their heat by panting and seeking ways to reduce that heat on their body. They have an internal system that allows them to identify when danger is there. And so tethering a dog, right, not only creates further anxiety, preventing their internal systems from doing what they're supposed to do to help reduce their body temperature, right, but it also does not allow them to seek out the shelter that they need. Therefore, we should be doing other things that do not that don't.
The speaker's timer has expired. Thank you. The next speaker is Tara Bosini.
Good evening, Mayor Bryant, Madam Vice Mayor, City Council members, city staff and directors, and my fellow Brentwood residents. I would like to express my support on this evening's agenda item. I would also like to be a voice for those who don't have one. My name is Tara Bosini. I am a dog owner, a dog lover. I've helped multiple rescues as well as some of the local shelters as far as volunteering. In addition to what Christina was saying, hundreds of dogs die every year from hypothermia and heat stroke. I would like to remind City Council of our recent summer temperatures. Just last month in July, we had a high temperature of 108. Normal temperatures in dogs ranges from 101 to 102 and a half degrees for their normal body temperatures. Any temperatures that exceed 103 are considered abnormal. Anything above 104 is hypothermia. Anything above 106 is heat stroke. Multiple organs fail and impending death occurs once those temperatures exceed 106 I urge for the city, City Council to further research and review or city staff to further research and review this item in an effort to prevent any of our city dogs from from heat injury or from and from possible death due to our city's temperatures being so extreme at times. I would also like to mention that I know that the health and safety laws are written in the way that they are, but maybe another thing to consider research is how this could also fall under animal cruelty laws. Brentwood is a family oriented city. A lot of us considered our pets to be part of our family. So I would, in in that spirit, I would just like to urge further research and review of this item so possible laws can be extended through the county to prevent these these occurrences from happening. I thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards on this item. I do have two hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Celeste Smith. Celeste, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to express that I'm very strongly in favor of any efforts that the City Council can possibly make to try and enact or improve laws around consequences for owners who keep their pets confined and basically abandoned outdoors in the extremely hot and extremely cold temperatures that we have here in this area. Pets suffer greatly at the hands of these irresponsible owners and under these conditions. Heat stroke in the summers and hypothermia in the harsh winters. These animals cannot speak for themselves, so we must be their voice. I ask you all tonight to please keep Brentwood the progressive and compassionate city it is for all residents, both two legged and four legged alike. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Whatever you do decide, please let the residents of Brentwood know. I've lived in five other states and boy, do we love our pooches. They are everywhere and it's really nice to say hi. You can actually meet people by asking them about their dog. It's really nice. Please let us know. The County Board of Supervisors have been a little wonky with listening to residents within Contra Costa County as of late, and we need to make sure that the County Board of Supervisors understands why we are doing this. It's not just affecting Brentwood, but all the cities, and we cannot count on getting yes votes from all the supervisors. So if we know that this is something that we come up with and we send to them, the residents are going to have to step up and call in to ensure that the County Board of Supervisors does the right thing. So that would be my one takeaway that I would strongly recommend. I would recommend like ads in the newspaper, posts on Facebook, just letting people know that this is going to go to the County Board of Supervisors and it's going to be agendized. Because if we don't call in, and maybe even if we do call in, they might vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised and no speaker cards.
We'll close public comments, open up to council discussion.
I'm in full support of this. Actually, probably, I want to say 10 years ago, our neighbor had a husky and it was outside in the heat. I called animal control every day and sent them videos every day because the poor dog would like whimper and cry. It was so hot. So I get it. My heart goes out to them. So I support it.
Councilmember Pearson?
I agree with the support. I also would say that I would like to get some direction back from staff. I think we we do have laws in place, but the it's the it's the issue of our high heats out here and and they're not so specific to outdoors. For example, Pinocchio Section 597.7 will make it a crime to leave a dog, an animal, not just a dog, an animal. Because we've been talking about dogs, but there's little kitties, too, that people carry around. I'm a big, I'm a dog and kitty lover. But to leave both of them in a vehicle under conditions that endanger their well being and it includes hot and cold weather without adequate ventilation and lack of food, I'd like to see us figure out how we can do something. That law there is a misdemeanor. It's punishable by a $500 fine and possible six months in prison, but there's also laws like Pinocchio Section 597T in humane confinement of animals. There's a lot of people who go commute to work and leave their dogs in a kennel all day, like a little crate all day for hours. I know we can't do a lot of things for inside the home. There's people who leave abandoned dogs. That's a violation of Pinocchio 597S. The reason why I'm reading all these is because I'd like for people who are going to watch this to know that you can call the police. There's Pinocchio Section 597 that says anyone who intentionally maims, tortures, wounds or kills, and I see say high heats is torture, especially from the report outs from the people who come down to the panel. Kill any animal or is guilty of a crime punishable by imprisonment in California State Prison, a $520K or both, up to one year in county jail. Call the police if you see some stuff, call animal control. But also, I think that we do need to do something about the fact that we do have high heats. I have heard the whimpering of dogs in my neighborhood as well, and I do not allow my little, my my dog Baby, who's my my favorite child, that all my children know, to sit outside in high heats.
I have a question, and I don't know if it's for you because you're the attorney or if it's for our, people have called the police and the police has, I mean, we've heard from staff, they can't do anything about this to call the county. But if she's just reading code that says we can, why aren't we? Why aren't we finding this guy and?
It's going to depend on situational, on at that time and moment we're there, if it's being deemed cruel. What you deem cruel to an animal may not be at that present moment.
But is it, I would think it'd be kind of like fireworks. As long as I got video of the fireworks, that's pretty good. So people have videos of the dog. Why isn't that as good for a dog, but it's good enough for the fireworks, for the police to do something?
So with, again, with the fireworks scenario, we have to have an identified party lighting it. And if you have that on video and you're willing to testify you took that video, then we would be able to cite them for the misdemeanor. So when it relates to the.
Can I jump and say that there was video taken of the dog that I mentioned earlier being led by a golf cart and bumped by the golf cart? There was, I I know that video was submitted to the county. I heard that multiple times. There are literally hundreds and hundreds of comments about that particular situation. And I think the frustration of of the county animal service is not responding or responding and saying, there's nothing we can do, is what led a lot of people to reach out and say, what can we do at a city level? So I I think there, there's there's enforcement issues for sure. I think that's that's not going to be saved by having this on a local level. But I can say that we should potentially define animal cruelty, maybe in what we're looking at and what we bring forward if we, if this moves forward. We haven't voted yet. But that when we, when we do come back, if it does come back, that we look at the impacts of tethering in heat, because I know I didn't put tethering in my agenda item, but we did put impacts of heat. And if tethering in the heat means that a dog can't move around and get some of that heat out of their bodies through panting, then of course, then heat is impacting that. And so we need to look at that as well. We know extreme heat's not going away and we know this is about enforcement, but I can also say, according to, this one's the Kennel Club, 23 states in the District of Columbia have laws restricting the amount of time you can humanely tether your dog to a solid object in your own backyard, sometimes for as little as 30 minutes. And most laws mention that your dog cannot be confined, because you mentioned confined, or tethered for any period of time in temperatures below 32 or during extreme heat advisories. So when, when, I'm saying when, we haven't voted yet, but if this does come back, I really want to explore, kind of like what Councilmember Mendoza mentioned earlier, what we can present as options. And I know there's a representative from the county watching this meeting and I hope that this person is paying attention and listening to the resident feedback and to the council's discussion. This is clearly an important issue to people here in chambers, but considering the hundreds of comments we've seen online about these issues specifically, it's important to a lot of people. So I would really like to see what we can look at when it comes to tethering and access to water that stays cool, that is not left out all day in the heat, that there is shade, that there is again, safety from having to rest on asphalt or concrete, that we look at whether the definition of animal cruelty can be used in helping to strengthen this case. And I also like the idea of if this goes forward and this does eventually go before the Board of Supervisors, that we as a city blast that out, that meeting information out, so that people are very aware this is something that residents drove and and started and launched. And so I would like for everyone to understand that this is another chance for them to advocate at the county level.
Can I ask a question? Is this just for county recommendations or are we talking about, what are we going to do as a city?
So this is, this is a good question because originally when I was presenting this, I thought, OK, if we adopt something as a city and implement it into our own ordinances and. as a city and implement it into our own ordinances and then present it to the county, that that would be a stronger case. But unless I'm misunderstanding recent conversations, that's not how it works. And Tim, if you could break in?
So the code that we currently have is the same code that the county has provided and has all the other city partners incorporating into their codes. So that they have one enforcement mechanism and the same rules for all their city partners that they provide services to. So I do understand that Beth Ward is participating via Zoom here. I will coordinate with her offline to schedule which meeting she can maybe attend in person and perhaps answer questions about what the law currently allows, where there might be some issues of where we can provide some feedback for her to take back. And process-wise, as I understand it, there's a city manager work group that's meeting October 12th that actually is scheduled to talk about animal services in the county. And so if we get feedback from the council about ideas you'd like to see incorporated into their ordinance, then they will take that into consideration and also work with all those city partners to get the same ordinance adopted before they take it to the Board of Supervisors. So we would try to schedule this probably September 26th or October 10th, so we get enough feedback from you. And that may push out some other items that aren't as time-sensitive, but we'll try to get that scheduled as soon as possible. Incorporate all the feedback with that subject matter expert here to answer all your questions explicitly.
I guess I'm still confused. So Councilwoman Pearson mentioned all of these penal codes that our police department could actively go out and execute on. So what are we going to do about that?
Can I add something to that?
Well, she cited a code about abusing and torturing dogs, and that's a penal code.
And all of that, she mentioned.
That's still subjective, like the chief said. So if it's torture, they can enforce the penal code. If it's something more of a nuisance and quality of life issue, then that's a little more difficult, right? And that's if the police can enforce that, great. If they can't, then we work with the county and have their assistance on it.
I was just going to add, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew what the penal codes were. To know that there's laws, and I was reading them to state what they were talking, for example, the 597.7 is you see a dog unattended in the vehicle. It's high heat, you can call the police. It's visible, they can see it happening. There are some instances, and this is not in defense of what occurred, because I think that was the county really dropped the ball on the enforcement at a county level, not at our local level, but there are situations where police, for example, if a dog's tethered in a backyard, they don't hear the dog, but they have a complaint. They can't just enter someone's backyard without probable cause. So there's a lot of situations, I think, I don't know if that's what the chief was trying to articulate, but there are situations where they can't, even if this is a violation of the penal code. So my advisement is to always just call the police when you think there's a violation, be able to articulate your facts, and then they have the responsibility to see if they have the fourth amendment, a fourth amendment right to go ahead and enter or not enter. So that would be... I don't know. You asked the chief.
You know those drones that we pay for? Can you use the drones?
Katie.
And just to bring us back to what's on the agenda, so what we have agendized is just suggesting amendments to the county code. Thanks.
And to be clear, it was, it was that way because I was told it needed to be that way. But I would like to, if it does not get adopted by the county, I would like to discuss ways of protecting dogs as a city. If that's fair, I feel like if the county...
I think that's fair. I think, and Beth Ward would be the best person to clarify what can be incorporated to the county code, and if they can't do something and can't enforce something, that would then be a city decision to see if you want to provide resources to have us incorporate some different standard for our city alone and provide the resources for us to be able to enforce that such code.
Okay. Preferably, the county would adopt, especially because we know extreme heat is not going away, as I said. So I would like to make a motion that we invest time, staff time and resources into this issue.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Can staff just clarify real quickly? So this issue, you've talked about a lot of different things tonight. So what I was hearing, unless somebody else has different notes, is staff coming back with information on possible amendments that could be made to the Contra Costa County codes related to animals being kept outdoors during periods of extreme heat, including considering whether a definition of animal cruelty can or should be used, limits on tethering animals, requiring access to cool water, and requiring access to ground other than concrete. Does that cover?
Sorry. I also wanted to mention a limit of hours in extreme heat. And then I really would like to, now this maybe isn't the same thing, but I would like to make it so that staff is very, does a lot of outreach about a meeting that happens at the Board of Supes, and I don't, maybe that's not part of this, but the next level. So that the public knows that if they can comment and advocate and write to their Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, once we understand when they plan to put that on their agenda, we can certainly circulate that on social media.
Okay. And then does it need to be part of this request also, that if the county does not end up adopting this countywide, that we come back and discuss things at a city level?
So given the way it's agendized, I wouldn't include that as part of the motion, but I think staff has certainly heard your concerns.
Okay.
Can I add in there? I don't, I don't think I heard anything about enforcement. I heard about rules, but also to include enforcement for violations of the things that were stated by Vice Mayor Meyer.
Yes, county enforcement.
County enforcement, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson?
Okay. Does, does the maker of the motion and the seconder of the motion agree to all of those changes?
Yes.
Then we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous? If only. I'm going to stop right there. We're going to move. My dogs think us. Item H 2.3, request from Vice Mayor Meyer and Councilmember Mendoza for city council discussion of and possible direction to staff regarding amendments to Brentwood Municipal Code Chapter 5.7, lost, stolen, or abandoned shopping carts by Smear and Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, I have to say I'm embarrassed over this one, because you know, today you saw us, you saw me very upset with bad actors when it comes to retail and selling cigarettes to kids. And this is somewhere where I feel like we're punishing good actors for running their business and trying to do the best they can. I guess I didn't realize that this was going to hurt small business, and it is, because the cart gets stolen and then they have to get it within a certain amount of time or they get charged. The problem is, is something was stolen from them and we are hurting them for someone doing something. So I think that we need to relook at ceasing fines for these carts that have been abandoned. I want to know, what did we used to do with it before we had the ordinance? What happened to the carts? How did we deal with it? Did we deal with it at a city level? I don't know who was in charge of that. And then what are we doing from a law enforcement perspective? Because we see people with stolen property, a cart is property. So what are we doing from a law enforcement? Because they're not supposed to have a cart. So that's kind of where I am on this. I want to cease the the fines altogether. I, I just think it hurts people who are trying to have a business, and it rewards those who actually stole the carts. Because there's no ramification for them.
I can say that when we, when we did pass this, it certainly was not the intent to punish the small business owners. And I think maybe, maybe we look at the change in levels for the amount of carts that it applies to. Maybe there's something we can do with the franchise versus corporate entity. I don't know. I think there should be a way for us to figure this out to make sure that our local business owners are not punished. I know that some of our really large retailers are going to have policies in place, they're going to have insurance for things like this, but the smaller locally owned business owners are definitely being hurt by this, and we need to look at ways to fix that.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public comment. Margaret?
If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I received no written public comments on this item before the meeting. I do have one speaker card. Greg Pitts?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I am a local business owner. I do own a grocery store here in Brentwood along with my wife. We received this notification in the mail a couple of months ago about needing to conform to new municipal code passed by the city council. It required us to put some signage on our carts with our property address, contact information, as well as the California penal code that states removing the shopping cart is a violation of California law. We did that, we complied, everything was good. Then we started receiving phone calls and emails from the city letting us know they found, you know, our shopping carts. We needed to pick them up or we would face fines or citations. I can tell you, since we've been open almost two years now, I've spent countless hours driving around the city picking up my own shopping carts. Replacement cost is almost $200. So for me, picking these up and getting these back to my store is vital to my business. But issuing fines to somebody that's essentially we're a victim of a crime because somebody's stealing our property, and now we find out that the city not going after the people stealing the carts, but they're going after the business from which they were stolen. Pretty much everything that Ms. Mendoza said was exactly what I was going to talk about. So I would really like this to be revisited because it really is just punishing business owners like myself, rather than the people that are actually out there committing the crime. So imagine somebody comes to your house, steals your car, drives it around, abandons it in a field or a street somewhere in Brentwood, and the city calls you and says, hey, come pick up your car, we found it, great. Oh, by the way, we're fining you because somebody stole it and left it. It makes zero sense. So please just, you know, look at this from the small businesses that operate here in Brentwood and really just, you know, doing what's right and not going after a business owner who had their property stolen. So thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards in person, and I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments, move into council discussion.
I'd like to cease the fines. I think giving them notice, I mean, I think all of our retailers would be happy to get noticed, like, hey, your carts are over here, like, like, I think you said they're $200 each. So $200 each, I'm sure they're happy to go pick them up. And I think that's a good relationship, but I think fining them might be a little bit too far if they can't get there within a certain amount of time.
I remember the part of the discussion regarding this originally, what was to not focus, and again, this isn't the only decision that a governmental body has made with the best of intentions that had unintended consequences. And so when we find out about these things, I, I agree. I think we need to address some concerns. I was, I was just in a store over the weekend and went to get a cart. And there were no carts. And I asked, you know, where are the carts? And they said, we don't have carts anymore. All of our carts that we had purchased have been stolen. And they had about 20 carts. It was a small store, and they cannot afford to replace those carts. And so the timing of this conversation is pretty interesting. But you know, I, I really think it's important, number one, I'm very frustrated. I know the council is, and I've got to keep this one, this item, this topic, but it, it isn't Grandma Jones that's running out of the store with the cart. Okay? And it's also not our families that are regular shoppers there. These, these carts are being stolen and abandoned. And they become a nuisance, and they, they become a potential hazard to traffic and, and all different kinds of things. I think we've got to find a way to not harm our local businesses, but also to address it because the original conversation, some, some of the larger retail food establishment or grocery stores in town were absolutely making no efforts to retrieve their carts. Apparently, because there were many dozens of them everywhere, and they would be there for a week or two sometimes. And so I would like to find a way that we can not harm our, our local businesses, but also find incentive. I always prefer a carrot versus a stick, but we've got to have a way that this situation can be addressed, that there is motivation for some of the larger businesses that have shown historically no interest in taking care of their problems of having their carts everywhere. Some of them, again, some of them aren't stolen by unhoused individuals. They are used to transport groceries. I don't agree with it, but I see it all the time, families walking down Walnut with, with grocery carts that they paid for, but they don't have a vehicle to get there. Maybe there's some way we can have incentive for them to get the cart back. I don't have the answer. I have confidence in our staff and, and our council, so I'm in support of figuring out a way to take care of this problem without hurting our, our local businesses.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I think during the discussion, if I remember correctly, not only was it that, it wasn't, it wasn't the small businesses that had an issue. It wasn't the Mr. Pitts type businesses that were, were violative. It was the big brands who just weren't picking up their carts. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, there was an expense that the city was paying in order to deal with. We were suffering a pretty substantial loss. So I wouldn't get rid of the fines. What I would say instead is to extend the amount of time, because it sounds like, for example, from what I heard from Mr. Pitts, he wants to get his carts back. They need them, because they're going to pay for them anyway. If we extended the timeout to give more time for businesses to get them, three days, if you're running a, a small business, is not a lot, a lot of time to go get such a, a big item. So what if we made it like 10 or 15 days to extend the time? I think we did that even on the storage containers in front of a house. We extended it two weeks to get, get your item, and then there'll be, there'll be a fine there. It's given sufficient time for someone to pick it up. It doesn't sound like he would just leave his carts there, and then there won't be a serious penalty to the small business owners.
I have a question to staff. What, what's the viability of at some point having one of our departments that is capable of doing so, retrieving these and fining and charging for, for that, that service? That we're not looking for this kind of business, but if we have a department that comes in at a certain amount of time, and if they take these back, they get, they get fined for us having to do that.
So that would likely be a third-party contract. A lot of cities do contract with cart retrieval services. In order for that cost to be recovered, there would still be fines associated with that operation. So the thought behind this ordinance is the pickup of the carts is a responsibility of the owners of the carts. And if the city wanted to go a different direction, we'd have to look at the cost of what that would be and how that would be structured in terms of not being punitive to folks. So for example, this gives you three days to retrieve a cart once we find one. If a cart retrieval services is going out there and picking up carts, it may have only been there for a day. They know, you know, we don't want to find people instantaneously if the cart just disappeared that day and the cart retrieval service just happened to be there and find it. So it's different procedurally in the ordinance to have a third party do it. We would likely not recover the full costs of that through fines and because folks won't pay them or, or what have you. So there would be a cost incurred by the city most likely to subsidize that. But I can't tell you what those numbers are right now. But it's not uncommon for cities to contract with a third party to do that in public property. Private property is very different. So we don't necessarily have the right to go in there and start taking things off of other people's property.
Thank you.
One of the things that the Vice Mayor mentioned was number of carts. Like, we know if we're worried about the big Safeways of the world, then how many carts on hand do you usually have versus like any business over X amount of carts is fined? Any business under that, it's X amount of days to retrieve so that there's no fine, but no fining on those.
Right. So the ordinance currently only applies to businesses right now that have 25 or more carts. In the city of Brentwood, that's 16 total businesses that are subject to this ordinance. Right now, we have 100% compliance of those 16%, 16 businesses. They've all submitted their cart retrieval plans, and they all have one in place with identifying the carts and a plan for how they would retrieve them if they are stolen or found off their property. So right now, that 25%, 25 plus carts affects 16 businesses in the Brentwood, and anything smaller than that is not affected by the ordinance.
Can I ask Mr. Pitts a question, Mayor? How many carts do you have?
I'm sorry, Mr. Pitts, could you come to the microphone so everyone that is viewing can also hear?
So when we opened two years ago, we started with 100. That's just kind of standard. We weren't sure if we were going to need more or less. We're down to about 65 or 75 right now. And that's, you know, kind of where we are, but it, you know, decreases, you know, a couple every month probably.
Do you know how many like a Safeway has on average?
I don't, but we can look at their cart retrieval plan because they have to tell us how many they have.
So could, if this gets accepted and it comes back, could we look at changing that number from 25 to 100? And then that would exclude small locally owned retailers.
Sir, is council's privilege how they want to set those numbers? So the 25 is, 25 plus is to capture. The 60 carts is a significant amount of carts that if 10% of those carts left the site. That's six carts on the potentially the street or the right away. If you want to increase it to 175, it's just a matter of how we define in the ordinance. And make sure we can enforce whatever number the council comes up with.
Well, I think if we had that, it would help us drive our decision a little bit better because I don't want to continue to hurt small business. And then my other question was to the chief, what do we, like, there's, it's stolen property. What do we do when someone's walking around with a cart and it's stolen property? We just let them walk around with it?
So it depends on who the person walking around with it is. So for example, as the mayor cited, a mother and two small children are walking home with their groceries. I don't think it would be prudent of us to stop them and issue them a citation for possession of stolen property. If they push it to their home and left it on their front yard. Again, they're using it as a mode of transportation. As it comes to our displaced homeless, another story, we may end up citing them. But on the other hand, if the cart is full of their property and depending on where we find them. They're going to have to get their property from point A to point B, or it'll be sitting on the curb on Brentwood Boulevard. As it, and then they have to move it slowly but surely to another location or steal a shopping cart from somewhere else. Again, it's a misdemeanor. They'd be issued a citation. They wouldn't be transported to county jail. And then what they did after we left is a whole nother story. We would confiscate the shopping cart, contact the business owner. And then they would have to come and either pick it up, or we would transport it to the corp yard to be held until the owner could come out and pick it up.
I guess I just see it as like, this is their investment. Like, why are we letting people steal carts and be okay with it? It's not, I mean, I have empathy for them being homeless, but it's not their fault that they're unhoused. And now they're losing money from their table, from their household. So I, that's, I think, the second thing we need. So the first thing would be, let's figure out how we write an ordinance to help small business and we're not hurting them. The second thing is, how are we going to deal with stolen property that we're turning a blind eye to? Because that's what we're doing.
So if I could clarify, the ordinance does include provisions saying it is unlawful to remove shopping carts from a premises, which aren't currently in our code. So it does introduce some language and penalties for people who are taking the shopping carts. It also includes a provision that owners may permit someone to take a shopping cart off the premises for certain purpose, for a certain purpose. But you have to have that permission in writing. So that gives us another enforcement tool if someone's. So the difficulty when you encounter a person with a shopping cart is proving, one, who it belongs to if it's not labeled. And two, that they don't actually have, that they did actually steal it. And without the proper understanding, right there saying, of course, they stole it, it's a little difficult to prove. So in this case, in the new ordinance, if they don't have that written permission from X business that they have a right to use this as transportation to their home. We have an extra enforcement tool, which we don't currently, we didn't currently, you know, before this ordinance was adopted. So in terms of turning a blind eye, most of the time, 95, 99% of the time when we find these shopping carts, there's no person associated with them. They are on the side of the road, they're in someone else's property and they're complaining, they're dumped. They're not with the person that we're turning a blind eye to. Most of the time, they're just dumped in the city. And hopefully they're labeled and we know who they belong to, right? And so it's not that we're turning a blind eye, it's just the types of shopping carts we encounter are already abandoned. And when they're not, there are often homeless issues and rights that they have around their possessions in addition to the possession of that property.
So, oh, sorry.
I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't just try to bring us back to the fact, this is just a future agenda item request at this point. So if we could narrow it and maybe figure out the scope of what you want, because this is getting pretty far into the details at this point.
But then I'm afraid if I don't give enough detail on what I want them to review, like I just had an issue today. Then they don't, we don't get back everything we're looking for. So I'm trying to be as detailed as possible.
I understand. It's a fine line. I can just hear my boss's voice from afar, so.
I heard, I heard Damian grab the microphone from the airport.
I did have one more question that is related to this item, so hopefully it's okay. But in the retrieval plans that are submitted by these retailers, does it say whether they're a franchise or a corporate? Or, I mean, does it say anything about the kind of business that is?
No, we don't ask for that on the form. It's not saying we couldn't, it's just not on the application they put that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman in the ordinance?
Yeah, Chief, just a little bit further, the cost of the shopping carts, $200. So the business owner would have to sign a citizen's arrest form for anybody in possession of that shopping cart. Before an arrest could be made.
Correct. In addition to having to prove that they were the one that stole it, they're in possession of the stolen property, yes. It's no different as if they were in possession of stolen property from any other business. We still have to prove they knew it was stolen and that the owner being that it's under the 950 would have to sign the citizen's arrest.
Can I ask Mr. Pitts one question? Without getting too far into the weeds, just because I'm curious and I just got to know.
Well, I'm not the boss of you.
This has been enacted for about three or four months now. And how many times have you been fined for not picking up your shopping carts?
We, I didn't know honestly that there was a fine until I received an email saying if we didn't pick it up within a certain timeframe, we would be issued a citation. So we have not had to pay any fines yet because I went and got that card. It was right down the street from our store. But just in thinking, you know, there could come a time where maybe I'm out of town. I can't get it within three days. Or, you know, a lot of times what happens is carts disappear and reappear. The location where I picked up that cart, I probably picked up two dozen carts of mine from that same, and it's city owned property. So, you know, it could be that they call me and say, hey, come pick this up. I go pick it up and the next day there's another one right back in its spot again. So there's really no, you know, so they could look at it and say, well, you never came and got it. So we have not had to pay any fines yet, though.
Okay, thanks.
While you're up there. Would extended time help you out? So if you had two weeks versus three days, would that be more helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I think any extended time would definitely be, be more helpful than, you know, what's current. Absolutely.
My concern was addressing that, and I agree, extended time may be something. But I think too much extended time makes the entire ordinance moot. Why have something if they can just leave it out there for two weeks? So the point is, we don't want our community to look bad. We don't want the things to be a danger. We don't want our local businesses to be hurt by it. I think we can find a solution.
So with that, I will, I would like to make the motion to have staff spend time and resources on researching both extended time and quantity of carts. What, let's look at both of those. Let's also look at working with our police department so that retailers know what they need to do. If a stolen cart is out there and how they can have a citation made and recover it. I also, so yeah, that's my motion, that we figure it out. Also, maybe a little bit of outreach to small businesses like Mr. Pitts, but also like the Safeways of the world. And let's figure out if there's, why they're not picking them up. Do they really just not care? But let's figure out, let's write an ordinance that works for everybody and that gets the most compliance without hurting people. It's kind of what I want to do.
And I will second that.
We have a first.
Wait, hold on.
I'll just ask if staff is clear on what that motion looks like.
If you could clarify the outreach piece, you want us to do that before we draft a revised ordinance to find out?
Yeah, yeah, because I think in this case, we didn't reach out to our local retailers and we kind of hit a hiccup. So reaching out to them and, you know, speaking to Mr. Pitts and, you know, just choose like maybe three, a small, a medium and a large. Tell them this is what we're doing. And do they have any feedback? Like, are we seeing, is there any unintended consequences that we might have not thought of? Me sitting up here, you know, like there could, you know, like last time we approved it, I didn't even think anything of it.
So would you like us to bring that back along with draft revisions? Or bring that back for a discussion and you could provide us direction based on that information, how you would like to revise the ordinance? Because, I'm sorry, just some of their feedback may be different than, they may want additional changes than what council has just put in this motion, so.
Can you come back with a staff revision for the ordinance? And then we'll discuss it. We can make any adjustments to the ordinance based on what we discussed, what you wrote and what we hear back. You got the feedback back from the field and, okay, thank you.
And my second stands.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Moving into item H 2.5, a request from Councilmember Mendoza for staff to prepare a local ordinance related to liquor license. With the ordinance defining schools and regulating proximity to specific use, Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, when I got here, there was only 20,000 or so people in town and there was a lot of open space. So this kind of wasn't as big of an issue as we're seeing lately. The state has an ordinance 600 feet from a school or, you know, youth center, you know, that kind of area. But then also 100 feet from a residence. So the 600 feet is 600 feet if you don't think anything's going to happen. 100 feet doesn't happen unless you can mitigate anything that will happen from a liquor, that's the California state law. And I feel like every time this comes up, we're, we're, we get, there's a quandary about like, what do we want as a city versus what the state says? And I think as a city, we need to, we need an ordinance. What do we want liquor licenses to look like in Brentwood? And the map that we saw today with the tobacco, it's very similar to the liquor license map. I mean, there's parts of our town that are inundated with liquor licenses. And I'm not talking just about downtown, I'm talking about a lot of places. And I find it disheartening that some of them are the lower income places that we're finding liquor stores and things like that. But, so I just want something so that when someone applies for a license, they know this is our stand. If you're going to want a license within 600 feet, please justify how you're going to mitigate any kind of negative ramification to, you know, youth sensitive area. If you're going to do it 100 feet within homes, what are you going to do to mitigate anything that's going to happen there? Because I think we're going to start seeing a lot more. And I've gotten feedback from, you know, my friends who are Walnut Creek PD. And they say, you know, there's a point of critical mass where, you know, you benefit, you benefit, you benefit. And then you have so many that the benefit outweigh, you know, the negatives outweigh it. So they're seeing, they're so inundated now with like drunken publics on the weekend and all of that kind of stuff. That he's like, I wish, I wish they would stop. I wish our council would do something to help us out. Because it's being, the police department is now dealing with such a big caseload, especially on the weekends. So that's all I want to do. I just want to reflect what the state says so that it's very clear that we follow the state. And that we will, and that we, if you want to do it within 600 feet, you got to come, you got to explain it. You got to tell us what you're going to do to keep it safe, you know, within kids and 100 feet within homes.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public comment.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom and plan on speaking, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. We did receive one public comment prior to the meeting and it's been posted on the city's website. I have no speaker cards, but I do have one hand raised in Zoom. And I'll call on Carolina Velaseka. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm in support of this. I do agree with the diminishing returns practice. This happens in business all the time. We're going to start seeing this with car washes in Brentwood. We have a plethora and I know people in Brentwood like to keep their car washes squeaky clean. However, when you have too many, all that ends up happening is that one ends up cannibalizing clients from another one, then they all start lowering prices and you end up with car washes going out of business. I think this is a little different though because of the negative impact it has on the surrounding community. I would just say that Antioch went through this specifically in District Two. Which is the more impoverished side of town. And they kept having one liquor store after another liquor store after another liquor store. Looking to open up shop on that part of town. Luckily, their planning commission said, no, like, that's it, we have too many in District Two. And we don't need to open up more. So I think this is important. It's predatory when you start putting all the liquor stores on one side of town. Especially if that's, you're not going to see a plethora of liquor stores over by Heritage High School and Deer Ridge. And those communities, you're going to see them on the opposite side of town. So I think it's very, very important that we do everything we can to balance out good businesses with not so good businesses. And this is not a so good a business when you consider how many other places you can go and get liquor. It's a huge amount. We have drugstores and grocery stores and gas stations where you can go get liquor. So this needs to definitely be balanced out and look at the negative effects that it has on the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments, move into council discussion.
Yeah, so the other thing I thought about is we had a big discussion about the Pecaria and their liquor license. And I think we also, when we, if we decide to do this, let's define exactly what a school means to our city. I think there was some discrepancy on what a school means. Like, is the presence of children every day considered a school is, you know, versus a youth center? Is, you know, a daycare, do we consider that? So I think that would be important. So it's just clear to me and to everyone else coming in asking for a license, like, how do we feel about it and what are we going to do?
So I think we explained at the last meeting on this topic related to it, that ABC issues the licenses. They check in with the city to see if it's zoned for it or if it requires a CUP. So they're the ones who make the determination about the definition of schools. One of the options the council has, if you want to create a standard higher than what ABC allows, that would change a lot of things. Is that what you're requesting to do standards higher than what ABC currently?
No, I wanted them to keep them the same. But I guess when you need a CUP, it should come forward. But also, if someone were to want to open a business within 100 feet of a house right now. What is our process for that? Like, do we, we leave it all on the shoulders of the state, who sometimes just are pushing papers? Or do we take an active role and say that our ordinance matches the state, it's 100 feet? We don't think it should be there, or we think it should be there with certain guidelines. Like, what is this operator going to do to ensure that there isn't drunk people on their lawn, on the lawns across the street? Because we know that happens. So, so I just want, I just want it to match. I mean, it might be double dipping, but I just feel like the last one was just a little bit confusing, you know?
So if I could clarify to flag for council, not every business that sells alcohol requires a CUP. Okay, so that's one issue. We don't issue the liquor licenses. So when people come to us with the CUP, we have the ability to provide conditions of approval on land use regulations. Right now, there are no separation requirements in our zoning code between alcohol sales and sensitive uses. Whether that's a school or a daycare or what have you. It's very wide open in our zoning code right now. So in order to regulate, either match ABC's code or even be stricter than that. We would need to introduce new land use regulations and we need to define what types of alcohol sales that applies to. So there are dozens of different types of ABC licenses that a business can get, on sale, off sale, restaurant, bar. You know, there's a whole, there's a whole gamut, right? And so we would also need to define what types of And so we would also need to define what types of ABC licenses we would want to regulate differently. So for example, Lazy Dog came in, they sell alcohol, that does not require a CUP today in that PD. Do we want it to? Do we only want it to require CUP if it's after 10:00 PM? You know, there's a, there's a lot of ways we can regulate alcohol sales in the city. It depends on what council wants to accomplish. So I also want to point out that ABC's 600 and 100 foot rules are not definitive rules. They have, they're may be enforced, they're not always enforced by ABC. So our code, if council wanted to mirror the ABC code, there's already wiggle room and caveats in ABC's regulation. So council may want to be a little more precise and strict and not say may, should, you know? So the ABC law in itself is not definitive in the 600 and 100 foot. There's, there's ways that they can overlook that requirement and they do often. Okay, so I would recommend we get specific about what type of alcohol sales we're talking about. How we would want to restrict that, is it a CUP for certain types or most types of alcohol sales? Distance requirements, we would need to define what the sensitive uses are that we would like to have separation from. And those are all things we can do and they're very standard for other communities, they're just not in our code today. But this can get very detailed and pretty specific.
Do other cities have their own laws for liquor licenses or do most cities, so most cities don't?
So ABC has jurisdiction over the licensing of alcohol sales of all types.
Yes.
Okay, so what we have jurisdiction over is land use regulations. Okay, so every city has its own land use regulations around bars, restaurants, nightclubs, you know, different convenience stores, places, liquor stores. Every city will have its own regulations, many are similar, many have separation requirements from sensitive uses. Some might be 300 feet, some might be 100, some might be 500 feet door to door or 300 feet property line to property line. But the concept is very similar in most communities.
Okay, so cities do have separation requirement?
That's very standard.
Okay, I guess my concern is just back to like, I guess we would have to need to define the sensitive areas. I can't remember what word you used.
Sensitive uses, yeah.
Sensitive uses area, so that we were not confused and that people when they're applying understand what we mean, right?
Absolutely, the clarity is important for the enforceability of all of this.
So yeah, so I wanted to find that. And then also the one around homes, I find concerning too. I think we should just give notice, those people I think deserve a notice. If you're going to open a bar next door or a restaurant that serves alcohol next door, I would hope that we could give them notice. They could examine the business and then they would know and they would know also, if they want to file a complaint with the ABC, they could do that on their own also, right? Like if we approve it, but they, they file complaints with the ABC, that's an avenue they can take. But we could, I mean, even just around noticing, I think would be good for us as a city so that people know. Just the way same, if someone wants a rezone, we tell 300 feet or whatever, there's going to be a rezone, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so administering that depends on how we find out that someone's applying for a liquor license with ABC, right? Whether or not we have the ability to notice that that's happening depends on how, how it comes to us. So if it's a CUP, that's a public hearing that requires a 300 radius, foot radius notice. If it's just a transfer of a business license, we may not know about that. You know, so the noticing piece of it, if it's dependent on the ABC process is a little trickier. If it's dependent on our own land use or permitting process, that's, that's much easier to implement.
Okay.
And, and one thing I did want to know, I'm sorry, I don't want to forget, is that ABC also has rules around over concentration of liquor licenses of different types. So if there is an over concentration concern for liquor licenses, ABC comes to the city and says, can we issue this liquor license? And then in that instance, we can say, no, there's an over concentration in this census, in the census district.
Would it make it easier for you if there was a city standard for what over concentration may meant?
ABC has it.
But as a city, right, like sometimes, sometimes we want our own guideline outside of, like, so if they come to you and say, how do you feel about this? Would it be easier if us as a council set, these are the guidelines? Or, you know, come talk to the council about it first?
We've been saying no.
What?
If there's an over concentration, they ask us, we say no.
You always say no?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that if ABC, if it's not an over concentration, ABC will not reach out to us. They'll just issue the license based on their rules and regulations. If it is an oversaturation, the application then is forwarded to us at the police department. And then we review what they're trying to open, all the ramifications of it and then the oversaturation. And the way they calculate the oversaturation has to do with a number of things within a census track. And it may be, for example, at the streets of Brentwood, you have multiple restaurants that want to serve hard liquor at their restaurants. If a new restaurant were to come in, that liquor license, if they don't transfer one in from an outer area, might be, will be considered an oversaturation. So then it would fall back on us as a city to decide whether we want a Vic Stewart's or whatever to go in there and be able to serve alcohol. So we would have to sign off on that, that there is a public need and public convenience and necessity for this application to be approved. And then ABC would approve it for that restaurant. So that's how the process works. So if it's not oversaturated, we don't even see it. We see it when it, they stick it up in the window saying license is coming.
Okay. I don't know if anyone else has.
Just wanted to make sure we're, I'm clear in what the, the difference is between a restaurant that has a bar and a standalone bar or a liquor store?
So ABC guidelines, so the ABC dictates the square footage being used, what type of food they're serving, how, how much they're serving food, what hours they serve it, what type of food, square footage, things like that dictates. Liquor stores are off sale, they're not allowed to consume it on site, so they're considered off sale, beer, wine and liquor. And again, as Alexis has said, there is a plethora of licenses out there. And liquor stores are for on sale. And then there has been some nuances since COVID regarding off sale for restaurants.
I've taken advantage of those myself during COVID, I appreciated those. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
But even like when you have a bar, right, do you want, like, it's a very different establishment when you lead with food versus you're leading with alcohol, right? I see those totally different, leading with food and leading with alcohol are two different experiences. So even that, it's like, I just, I don't know how, like, I keep thinking about the taqueria. And how could we have mitigated that with our, would, would there have been any way to have that done in our ordinance? So then it didn't have to come to us. Is, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, that liquor license, three of us felt that it's a school. Three of us wanted guidelines around it just to make it safer. So is there a way to do that so it doesn't have to come back to us, it's just standard policy?
Well, that's what a city ordinance would do. It would define what the process is and what the criteria are that anybody has to comply with. So if you comply with it, you don't necessarily have to go to council, right? So in that instance, if, let's say the council adopted an ordinance that had a 200 foot separation requirement from a sensitive use. Then we define daycare, tutoring center, public, private school as a sensitive use, then the taqueria may not have been able to move forward at all with selling alcohol. Because we would have said, this isn't, this is not a permitted use, okay? There are also, there are also regulations where you can separate uses from each other, not just separate, sensitive uses, I'm sorry, but separate them from each other. So bars have to be within, have to be at least 300 feet apart. Or, you know, you can get pretty detailed in these regulations. But if you require a CUP, it's going to go to a border commission, it's going to go to planning commission. And then that's appealable to council, right? So a CUP is a discretionary process that would require someone to hear it. If you don't go with the CUP process, then it's difficult for us to know when people are applying or getting liquor licenses because that is the jurisdiction of ABC and we are not necessarily clued in at the very, very beginning of this process.
I kind of, I like the process that we have now, I know we have control over land use and CUPs and not licensing. And I think that requiring people to come here on the CUPs is what I would like. Just definitively putting something in place seems so concrete and I think we take it situation by situation. I think what made the decision at the taqueria so hard was we didn't have a definition for schools. So my advocacy would be to define schools in our municipal code. Because I think the main issue that came down to it was, oh, is it a school? And I'm like, they're in daycare learning ABCs, they're educated, this is school to me. So I think that would be where, where I would lie. But as far as like, we, we're bumping our heads against zoning and then competition with like, you know, ABC and ATF. And I think that there are, again, I want to say like, you know, the over policing, I think there are regulatory agencies that can do it. And I also don't want to restrict us bringing businesses to Brentwood. But I do want to protect our youth. So I think for me, a balance would be to keep our process, it seems like there's processes in place right now where we are. If there's oversaturation, there, there, these things are happening. And then, look, we just did it with the taqueria, we, we made provision where we didn't let it all the way happen. And we did set times, so they still were able to sell their liquor, but we made sure that, look, it doesn't make sense to sell a Modelo at 10:00 AM in the morning right by a school, period. So I think keeping it the way it is is, would be where I vote. But I would also probably add, if we can, just making a municipal code change to add the definition of a school. I know we don't have that many definitions in the municipal code and I know there's a reason why. But I think adding a definition of a school would be really helpful when we come to make these types of decisions.
I agree with that, I think the school thing gets me. That was the hardest part for me for the taqueria was the school. So I agree with that, maybe defining schools in a better way. And I'd also like to understand more about the saturation laws, like, because why do we see so many in District Two, right? Like, it's just weird to me how many we have over there. But so if, I mean, I don't know if everyone feels good about spending staff time and resources on better defining schools with something that we're comfortable with. And then just getting a little bit of education around what the state is doing to define saturation so that we know what they're talking about. And I know what to expect, like, right now, I don't know what to expect when it comes to that.
I can give you a brief, I believe that Brentwood Boulevard is a separation of two census tracks. One side of the road is on one census track, one is on the other side of the census track into a different census track. And I can pull that for you, ma'am. Additionally, there's, the things that play into the oversaturation is crime, for example. The vagrancy laws, theft, vehicle theft, petty theft, felony theft, stolen vehicles. And there's a couple others. So you may have one, I can tell you that Kohl's is in a census track. Kohl's has, is, then the retail theft shoots that number up. And it brings it above what would just automatically allow ABC to approve a business based on those numbers alone. But I can get you what the map looks like from ABC.
That'd be great.
And I can reassure you that as it relates to any establishment that sells alcohol for consumption on premises and or off, we use ABC to our advantage. So for example, our bars in town, if we arrest somebody for drunken public, we can associate them to that establishment. That report gets sent to ABC, ABC gets enough of them, they'll open an investigation. And, or we may request them to open one and they'll come out, do their investigation and then start the process for suspending the liquor license, whether it be temporary, permanent. And we've had businesses in town where they have had their license suspended for 30 days and ended up having to forfeit because they can't afford to be closed for 30 days and not sell alcohol. So we do keep, use that branch to our advantage as, as much as we can as it relates to criminal activity related to the consumption of alcohol.
Okay, so then I'd just like to make a motion to spend staff time and resources.
Can I just interrupt to maybe confuse the item one more time? As, as we had a, a local business owner that was here talking about law of unintended consequences. I'm thinking of our downtown and we have a current restaurant looking that could possibly impact, be impacted and not be able to open up downtown. I'm thinking of the Innovation Center that has mixed use development, that we might have what's defined futurely as a school. Yet you want mixed use vertical development with residential and commercial on the bottom, which that, that might restrict the ability of many of the uses. Again, I'm, I know I might be using some examples that, that are going to come in the future, but, but you might want to consider how you treat downtown specific plan differently. And even the Brentwood Boulevard specific plan and, and the Innovation Center possibly differently than some other areas. And as the chief talked about, we don't have a lot of commercial corridors. It just happens to be the Brentwood Boulevard, the corner of Sand Creek and Brentwood Boulevard is a commercial corridor. And it all falls within one council district where the rest is really residential. So I'm just giving you a little economic development. We'll implement whatever the council wants, but at the same time, there will be an impact.
Well, the one downtown, I mean, we've talked about this plenty of times, that corner one that's available, that's why I said leading with food is different than being a bar, right?
So that's a, that's a 47.
Yeah, so lead, like, I would feel comfortable leading with food, but if you, I've had meetings with people on that street who get really upset about all the people who are drunk and all the cars. So where I wouldn't want to restrict a restaurant with a liquor license that leads with food, I would be apprehensive about a bar and it's, I think, 90 feet from a house, right? So it's like, it's a different, so that's when I brought this up, it's like, how do we deal with that? To make sure our residents are safe, but we're still having business, so.
And I, I think if you look downtown, we have restaurants that some people would consider a bar that has a 40, a type 47. I don't want to mention names. But under the ABC laws, they fall under a restaurant that has a full bar. That, and the rule is that 50% of their revenue is supposed to come from, from a restaurant. The city doesn't enforce that, that's done with ABC. And so one operator, under the exact same license and another operator could have the exact same license. And how, how, we have to treat both of those the same as planning, as reviewing those applications.
But if I read the law on housing 100 feet, it says it is no liquor license given to anything under 100 feet unless they can prove it's not going to be negatively impact the neighbors. Versus, versus another, like, giving it and then let's see what happens. The, the housing one is definitely 100 feet, it's a no unless they can tell us how the neighbors are going to be kept safe.
Yes, that is ABC's requirement. So to clarify, you know, in touching on defining schools, we still don't have a separation requirement in our code. Okay, so that would be up to ABC to interpret. That would be up for the applicant of the liquor license to prove to ABC that they meet ABC's requirement and ABC can give him a liquor license within 100 feet of a residence. We are not involved in that process. So unless we have our own separation requirements, that's happening in another agency outside and we're not involved.
Yeah, and that's up to the residents, if the residents that live there don't want it, that's up to them to write a complaint into the liquor board during the process of reviewing that business for a license.
Correct.
And they see the sign up and they can take action if they like.
Correct, and it's through that agency.
Yeah, but I think for us tonight, it's, let's define a school and what that, I think that's still important, defining a school and what that means.
And just to clarify, defining the school does not create a separation requirement from it. So that would still be something that Planning Commission, if a CUP came to them, would be considering as part of the overall impacts of the project. So we could clearly define the school, but that does not create a requirement to be a certain distance from the school. All it does is define it. And if that's what council wants, that's fine. It just doesn't, it doesn't directly result in, in limiting CUPs being issued near schools. It's still discretionary.
I think for an applicant though, they know it's not a slam dunk. They have to go through the steps of, how are they going to mitigate anything that might happen negatively due to, due to the liquor license? Versus a yes and let's deal with it later, like, we're going to have this or we're going to, you know, like, we'll have bouncers or we'll have this. Like, they'll have, they have to have a plan together before they get a license versus, you know?
In ours, if they apply for a CUP for us.
And that's what I'm talking about.
And not everyone will, not everyone's required to.
Yeah.
So we won't be having that discussion with every business that sells alcohol, based on our zoning.
Yes, but then at least our public knows what we consider it. Because the public calls in all, even the county stuff, they call in on what a school is and where kids are, what they should consider a school. Everyone thinks about it differently. So I think if we had a definition for our residents and they want to call the county or they want to call the liquor board, they can say, in Brentwood, this is what, this is what we consider, we want to do to keep our kids safe. I don't know, I mean, I'm just thinking about, I think it would have been easier if we had a definition last time and it was like, we all agreed on it. I think right now, we don't, we didn't agree on it.
I absolutely agree, clarity helps everybody, but. as the person who's going to be administering this code, I, I have a feeling that that's not going to be sufficient for council, because it's not going to prevent or limit the sale of alcohol near schools. If council is that concerned about it, just defining it may help when people push back on ABC, but it does not give us any regulatory teeth to necessarily say you cannot sell alcohol near schools.
Unless it's a CUP.
Unless it's a CUP, but that's still discretionary, because just defining it doesn't tell the Planning Commission, they, one way or the other, that they should deny it. It's still a discretionary act, right?
Yes, which then they can vote on, or we can call for review like we did last time.
So if I may interject, just one quick final thought. Our ordinance, as it's set, our zoning ordinance that is, is set up right now includes many, many references to schools and where we allow them and, you know, other things that have nothing to do with liquor licenses. So if the council is going to make a motion tonight and act on it, maybe consider whether you would like us to define schools for the purposes of alcohol uses separately somehow than we define schools generally, because otherwise, if we just adopt some new definition of schools, you may be, that includes, for example, daycares and other things that we haven't traditionally considered schools. You may be substantially opening up the allowable uses in other areas that you don't have any intention of doing, right? So maybe give staff some direction that would allow us to come to you with some ideas for how we might limit that broader definition to this topic and not all land uses. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we'd like to, so you're saying define schools as it pertains to liquor licenses? And that for alcohol use? Does that sound good?
Let me just ask a clarifying question. Is that going to, definition need to be in every zoning district and PD to be applicable, or can be in one place and affect?
So Alexis and I will need to speak. That's a very good question. What I'm envisioning would be something like a new ordinance that would, for the purposes of that particular chapter, define schools to include whatever you all decide that includes. And then potentially set up some proximity regulations such that, you know, proposed alcohol selling uses could not be within whatever proximity to schools or other uses, other sensitive uses. But that way, we're not upsetting the whole rest of the zoning ordinance and having these unintended consequences. But these are the kinds of things that staff needs some time to flush out so we can understand how all these parts work together.
Okay, so my motion with what she just said. Did you second her or no?
But I think, I wasn't sure if it was clear whether it was.
I'm not clear. I'm sorry.
We're defining schools as it pertains to liquor licensed, alcohol liquor licenses, so not schools in other areas.
Yes, I, I heard that, and I thought there was another issue related to alcohol that you wanted to.
Well, I mean, I can talk to the chief offline. It was about the saturation, which I probably have more questions about, but we can totally take those offline. Because that is a big concern for me in the areas that have like brown and black people. Like, it just, it's, it's, it's a little bit concerning. So, but we can take that offline.
And, and so to your earlier point about staff bringing you the whole universe when you ask for a specific future agenda item request, what Katie was saying is there's a lot to do with regulating alcohol, and it's not just defining schools. And there's ways we would probably want to recommend that, in best practices, that how this is incorporated into our zoning ordinance. And how it relates to the three specific plans we have and the plan development. So nothing is ever simple in land use, as much as I would like it to be for your sake and everybody else's. So what's coming back to you is likely going to be a little more complicated than just defining a school. It will include that, but it's probably going to be a little more complicated because of the process that it would require to get us there, if that makes sense.
Okay, sounds good.
So I'm sorry, just to, to clarify, are you saying that you would add things to it that weren't necessarily part of the request because they are best practices?
Because they may be necessary to make it enforceable and be able to be incorporated into the municipal code. We also have the zoning ordinance update that we're doing that may change other definitions in the city for other purposes, and so it all needs to fit together. So there's no unintended consequences of making one new definition that then creates other issues. So we will certainly do what you've directed us to do if that's the vote tonight. But it may be a little more complex than just that to get it incorporated in the code, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, in that case, I do second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We have one more motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There was a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
I don't believe we can hear you, councilor.
I'm sorry, I was going to ask before we took the vote if we can adjourn in honor of Michelle Galardo's daughter who passed away in a car accident.
Yes. We are adjourned in honor of Michelle Galardo's daughter. Thank you.